Okay, all right, we'll get started although we're not all connected to our board documents. I'd like to move that we reconvene to public session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, all right, we're reconvening. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd like to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please join us now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your patience as we got our act together this evening, I appreciate that. The first thing we're going to do is swear in our new student representatives, and may I put you in charge of that, Ms. Hoefler?
Yes, our new student representatives are Ms. Stella Draper and Mr. Andy Lann, and congratulations. I'm going to ask them to repeat the oath of office that I will administer at this time, so please repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm
You solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States and this state
And the government established in the United States and this state.
Under authority of the people
Under authority of the people.
And I do affirm
And I do affirm.
That I possess the qualifications
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by Board policy
Prescribed by Board policy.
For the Office of Student Representative
For the Office of Student Representative.
To the Board of Education
To the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome to the Board of Education.
Welcome.
Okay, as I mentioned to Mr. Lann, I'd like each of you to sign the document you were given, I'm going to pass these down to you, this is a second copy of the same document, I'd like you to sign both sets, pass them back to me, I will sign both sets and I'll return one to you. Thank you.
Wonderful, welcome, we're so delighted to have you. All right, I'd like to start, we're at, we just finished number seven on the agenda, if you're looking at your agendas, we normally have two public comment periods, the second one, number 18, is on the second to last page of the agenda, typically nobody comes because it's midnight at that point, so I'm going to move that we reassign number 18 to occur after, I'm sorry, where do we want to have it, we want to have it before we discuss our board action items, so essentially it will occur before number 14, in other words, what we're going to do, no, that's not really right, it'll be like 11 and a half, so we're going to go ahead, I'm going to, we're going to talk about communications, approval of minutes, student representative report, I hope you guys have something lengthy prepared for your first day. We're going to do a brief superintendent's report, and then before number 12, we're going to have our public comment session, our first public comment session, it will be limited to an hour, I'm going to ask you guys just to please yourselves and, you know, be considerate of your neighbors who may have to leave earlier than you, we will then have our second normal public comment period, after we give our board reports, and that will be unlimited unless, you know, we see that it's 3:00 in the morning and everybody's about to die, but I anticipate that it will be unlimited in time, okay, so we'll have an hour of public comment, then an unlimited public comment. Okay, Scott, oh Linda, do we have any communications apart from listed in number eight?
I understand there have been other communications, but these are the only ones that came through my email.
Okay.
Okay. No, the board has been advised of other communications related to, I think, the issue that brought everyone here tonight.
Right, right.
Yes.
I think there are a couple of big issues tonight, and one of them is the bathroom situation at Bartle, so we have had a number of emails about that. Okay, approval of minutes, I'm going to move that we approve the minutes of our regular public and executive session meetings on August 19th, 2019, is there a second?
A second.
May we have a roll call, please? Thank you.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Mr. Reslavich?
Abstain.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Linda, I'm sorry, I need to change to abstain, I was not present for that meeting, my apologies, but I'm sure the minutes are completely accurate. Sorry about that, I'm paying attention, I'm a little distracted, but, okay, do the student reps wish to say anything to our audience at this time? Do they wish to say like, my name is blah 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 and I'm a senior, or, you don't have to.
I'll just make it brief, I'm Andy, I'm a senior at the high school.
I'm Stella, I'm a senior at the high school.
Fantastic, we're looking forward to hearing from you at as many meetings as you can attend and give us information, and now Scott's going to give us, oh, you do have a report, oh, I'm so sorry, I was being sarcastic, please, I'm delighted.
So at the high school, back to school night is September 26th, that's coming up, and that's where the rollout of the new Chromebooks are going to happen, and there's going to be a new style of a meet and greet with the teachers, so it's no longer the bell system, we're going to, it's going to be more staffed and more structured for a friendlier conversation, and then there's some other things coming up that are brief, like the Hall of Honor program, that's coming up in October, as well as the planting, tree planting with the Borough and the Shade Tree Commission, or Committee, sorry.
Thank you so much, I'm sorry, I assumed you had nothing.
I'm sorry, also the middle school's having their back to school night on the 24th of September.
So at Bartle, they're having, their Bartle back to school night is September 25th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and they are also having a major tree planting with the Borough and the Shade Tree Committee, and 19 trees will be planted at Bartle on October 14th. And so Irving's back to school night is September 19th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., we look forward to meeting many new families, oh, and they are also participating in the Keep Middle Sex Moving Walk-in Back to School Day on October 10.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Scott, did you want to give a report?
I do, I owe it to the board and the community, the first meeting of the school year to review the strategic plan, when I was interviewed for the position superintendent all over four years ago, I told the board that it was imperative, we have some kind of plan to frame how we budget, the kind of professional development we offer, how we evaluate staff, develop curricula, so we brought together about 60 residents, including folks who have kids in schools, folks who don't, we had plenty of students present as well, we met for two nights in June, June 28th and 29th in 2016, so that's three years ago, and here we are, three years later, I'd like to give you a quick update on those things that we have been able to address and those we haven't. Last year, we began to riddle the 60 some odd action steps that we put in place when the plan was first developed, and so of the approximately 15 or 16 action steps, I have to go back and count the exact number, almost a third, we were able to achieve a handful, but as you can see, in most cases, particularly when it comes to differentiating instruction, are still in developing phase, and by achievement, I'm talking about full implementation, I'll give you some examples. We, last year, set about as an action step to be sure we had two student-led organizations in place, Sources of Strength and Teen PE, and both of those organizations are fully installed, so now we have our Teen PE students providing family and sex education lessons after being trained by Rutgers University staff under the guise of, Ms. Asamoah was our teen center director, and then Ms. Mitchell, this year, one of our new PE teachers is going to be taking over Ms. Mitchell's role, she is, by the way, coming to us already, having been trained as a Teen PE coordinator. Another example, I pointed out, and we have a second student-led organization called Sources of Strength, this is a cadre of students who I understand have expanded up to 25 this year, who are also trained by and arm of Rutgers University with which we have a collaboration, these kids are your go-to informal leaders among their peer groups, they're not necessarily the most popular kids in the school, but they're certainly popular in their circles, who are trained to know how to connect their peers who might be expressing suicide ideation or other mental health challenges to the right professionals. Our Sources of Strength have also become a PE rally group of sorts, remember last year when I was walking up and down the high school halls by the glass windows, science and math wing, there were post-it notes placed on multiple lockers with positive statements, just random positive statements, that was just one example of the work that Sources of Strength did, and I'm looking to our students, because I believe both of you are Sources of Strength, or Andrew, you are, correct, Stella?
I'm in Teen PE.
We're both in Teen PE.
Yeah, we're both in Teen PE.
We did not, however, implement a few important action steps that I hope it to circle back to, one of which is, I guess, a third rail of superintendencies, and that's homework, how to manage time, how to manage effectiveness, I conducted study group research, I had students as early as Bartle age informing me about how they felt about homework, and I have to come back to that research, it's just something that I have not done yet, and perhaps we can, at some point, another action step that we didn't implement is to actually come back to the students, we want to continue taking a leadership role among the school community, and have them be the ones to plan programs that focus on equity. Going forward, I do want to highlight a couple of the action steps that we want to implement under certain goals, our first goal has all to do with the whole child, not just focusing on academic performance, which by, I'll tell you, I feel takes a backseat to just about everything else when it comes to social emotional health, so we are looking this year to take all of the work that we're doing in the area of social emotional learning and articulate at K-12, foster a common language from responsive classroom at Irving to the Bartle Social Emotional Decision Making Lab at Bartle, all the way up to the work we're doing to move away from punitive discipline measures and more towards restorative practices, we're really challenged by this action step, so I have a team of teachers, doctoral students from Maurice Elias's lab, and our coordinators of SEL, Ms. Tracy Maiden at Bartle, Juliana Luxa, Dean of Restorative Practices, all helping me try to vertically articulate our work from K-12, so kids better understand when they come out of responsive classroom, how to scaffold onto what prior, that what they've learned in responsive classroom when they enter the work at the lab and then move on to the middle high school. The other action step that falls under our focus on the whole child is to do a much better job with our in-school suspension program, we have a discipline equity group that meets three, four times a year, there's several members of the board on that group, I also have Dr. Ann Gregory stop in from time to time since her expertise is restorative practices and discipline equity, and what we've resolved is that our in-school suspension program is punitive, it's not a support model, so if I had my druthers, I don't have time to get into that tonight too much, but I would create a program to push in services, so if a student is suspended, spends one or more hours being provided counseling support about what post-secondary options he or she has, essentially making sure we're planning for the future of that student, also have our dean, Ms. Juliana Luxa, work towards restoring the individual to the community, obviously the, that the student is in in-school suspension, he or she has done some harm to some element of the community, and if I can get this in gear, I would love to reach out to local groups like Kinetics to foster mindfulness activities among all of our students, but particularly those who are in the in-school suspension environment, we came close to offering yoga to our students last year, but just couldn't make that work, and then finally, I'd like to engage Rutgers University Behavioral Healthcare on a greater level, we're already doing some work with them at Bartle, to provide mental health support beyond what our teen center is doing, so if we're successful by the end of this year, our in-school suspension model now becomes a six, five or six-hour student support model, maybe an hour spent on making up academic work he or she missed during the day. As I pointed out earlier, I would love to come up with a new homework protocol, I'll try to swing back to that. Now regarding the second goal, which has to do with promoting educational equity, it's a mission of this board, and me, and I, to make sure that we're doing more to not only address the needs of students who come from different cultural backgrounds, but students of different learning styles, talking about our special needs students, maybe our students who don't have learning challenges, so we've got to do more, we've got to really double down on implementing more PD to help our personnel better understand cultural diversity. When I rolled out this, set this goal, and we had another iteration of this action step about two years ago, we had all of our faculty take an implicit bias assessment conducted by Harvard University and teaching tolerance, and that was our way of having some kind of a step-off place to talk about our hidden biases, we really got to take it to the next level, talk about how those hidden biases compel us consciously or subconsciously to microaggress. I also need to engage our leadership team and our support staff and faculty more on how we can talk to each other about this cultural diversity, we were trying to work with some organizations to come in and provide professional development in this area, but unfortunately, at this point, our budget couldn't support that, so we're going to try to do that in-house, and I mentioned the professional development, but more specifically, this action step would have us looking carefully at how we can help our teachers codify the work that they should be doing to be culturally responsive in their lesson plans, which then holds them accountable and maybe helps them frame visually, conceptually, what they should be doing in the classroom. Just a couple of more slides, one thing that we added, because our Global Citizenship Seal Program has been expanding, is a concrete measurable outcome that we recognize is very idealistic and may take two years, so perhaps this will become one of those developing action steps, but we would love to see 25%, a quarter of our next year's senior class graduate with a distinction, and that means that I'm going to have to be working with my lower grade principals, the middle school principal, the Bartle principal, to see if we can have a feeder program for the Citizenship Seal all the way up through senior, senior year, Mr. Gold right now is the coordinator of the Citizenship Seal. Most of you know, some of you may even be on the committee that we've established, we do have some parents on this committee, that we're redesigning our math program at the middle school, which will have us merge the on-level and the above-level 6 and 6A classes, so that we'll have reduced, what we refer to as tracks, I like to call it ability groups in our middle school. Sorry?
Below level, right? I'm sorry, you said on-level.
Correct. Oh, well, the 6 and 6A class, so we only have one, and, correct, that's a better way to put it, the on-level and the below level, probably should have referred to as above level, ah, thank you. So if we do this right, we're going to be training our Bartle staff, our fourth and fifth grade teachers, as well as our sixth grade teachers, on how to incorporate something which Dr. Batty, who I did see somewhere in the audience, professor at Rutgers University, has been assisting us to do, on some level, complex instruction as a way of changing delivery of math instruction, so we can do a better job differentiating, this phrase differentiation of instruction sounds so idealistic, and I'm sure you hear it over and over again, as much as you hear me talk about social emotional learning, I know I get, get me fun of in some circles for how I always talk about social emotional learning, you probably hear the same thing about differentiated instruction, you're always hearing about it, and we, we're trying to get to a place at which we can actually have a concrete way of delivering differentiated instruction model, and complex instruction might just be one of those ways to do it, we're learning lessons, by the way, from some of our sister districts in different parts of the state, about what they did and didn't do well, we're trying to learn from their mistakes, so we don't just rush this along. I'm going to skip to the, to the last goal, which is about differentiating instruction, we, the leadership team and I, we need to continue to not only hold our teachers accountable, but support them to be more personalized in their delivery of instruction, one thing we're looking at as a, we have an evaluation committee that's made up of union leadership and teachers and whatnot, we're trying to redesign our lesson plan template, so it actually compels our teachers to codify the ways they're differentiating, and the rest really has to focus on professional development. One thing I do actually want to hone in on before I wrap this all up, I tasked our then supervisor of district initiatives and funded programs, Jen Knapp, she's now the Borough Principal, Nicole Krupski, ex-high school teacher, English teacher, is filling in for her, so I will be having her take the reins on this, I want us to be able to take a look at all of our assessments, K-12, including the standardized assessments, continue to monitor how much time our kids are taking tests, but get to a place at which, at which we can actually develop authentic assessments, I know it's idealistic, but I have to have an end game, I have to have a goal, homegrown, internal, authentic assessments that actually get kids to demonstrate what they know, and we understand that kids have different ways of learning and different ways of expressing themselves, so these assessments would take different forms, as opposed to just the NJSLA, the ex, what is now What Park was, a very linear way of assessing what our students know. And that's about it, I will be engaging the community who was helping me, elements of the community who was helping me to give me feedback about the strategic plan, again, we'll meet two or three times during the year, and then I'll provide another update in good time. Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That concludes my report.
All right, yeah. This is a professional meeting, all right, here we go. That brings us to agenda item 11 and a half, public comment, before we begin, I did want to make a few remarks, I hope you'll indulge me, I know people are probably, there may be people here with a variety of concerns, not exclusively related to the Bartle bathrooms, nonetheless, since there are a lot of people here with that on their mind, I did want to make some remarks about those, but, you know, you're free to talk about whatever you want, of course. Oh, we need to make a motion? I thought I did.
No.
Linda has to tell me what to do, since I'm not the usual leader of the meeting, what is my next?
You need to make a motion to move public comment.
I thought I did.
No.
Oh.
No, you moved it.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't do that, I would like to move that we make, that we move our second end-of-the-meeting public comment session to right now, in other words, we move number 18 to essentially number 11 and a half, and that we limit it to one hour.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? All right, thank you for that, Linda will be guiding me throughout the evening, make sure I do what I'm supposed to. Okay, concerning the bathrooms, if you're here for the first time and don't know what's been going on, I don't want to get too into the weeds, but at our Bartle School, which is our grades two through five school, when school began last week, four of our six multi-stall bathrooms had been redesignated as multi-gender, all-gender bathrooms, bathrooms for everyone. This was done without a lot of communication, and the board is very sorry about that, there was just a breakdown in communication between the board, the administration, and so we moved more quickly than we ordinarily would with something that, you know, people might have concerns about. Then to make things worse, those four signs were removed, telling students that now, ah, yes, all the bathrooms are now single gender bathrooms as they were before, that also was harmful, and the board is very sorry about that as well, we have some internal thinking to do about how we communicate with our administration, and, you know, we're going to work on that, we have been working on it. Onto the bathrooms issue, I do want to read my little statement, we have listened to concerns from, let me say this first, we have sort of a very general plan going forward, but obviously the point of this tonight is for you to tell us more, and that will affect how we move forward, nonetheless, I wanted to let you guys know what our general plan is. We've listened to concerns from community members and parents, and we recognize the need for bathroom arrangements that protect all of our students, both those who are not comfortable in our current single gender bathrooms and may even feel unsafe in them, and students who are only comfortable in gender-specific bathrooms and may even feel unsafe in all-gender bathrooms. After consulting with our attorney, speaking with parents, individual board members, one-on-one discussions with the administration and with one another, it has become clear to us that the best way to accommodate the needs and preferences of our diverse group of students will be to provide at Bartle at least one all-gender multi-stall bathroom in addition to our current traditional separate facilities segregated by gender. Furthermore, it has become clear that at least for some of our students, this is a matter of some urgency, all-gender bathrooms are bathrooms for everyone, cannot wait until we construct a new school or knock down walls and create new bathrooms with modern privacy features, thus, we intend to implement at least one all-gender multiple-stall bathroom at Bartle School as soon as possible. We know that the solution for some of our students, the best solution, would be an immediate change in the designation of the bathrooms, and this feels particularly urgent, given that as a district, we have both provided access to those bathrooms and then taken that access away. However, we have some preparation to do, we need to do a better job of supporting teachers and staff so that they in turn can support our students, the goal is for every student to have relatively convenient access to a bathroom where they feel safe, and for them all to know exactly how to find such a bathroom, that did not happen as we initially rolled this out. I can't give a particular timeline, because there are a number of things we are still investigating, but I, we do know that it is urgent, we just came from a lengthy discussion about how urgent it was, and Scott has committed to working to get this done as soon as possible. I just want to give one example, you know, normally we roll these things out kind of slowly, to make sure that we have read all of the statutory provisions, that we have heard from experts, that we have heard from parents, tonight we learned about a New Jersey Administrative Code provision that potentially conflicted with a part of our more specific plan that we had, normally we don't like to roll things out in the school district, finding out about code provisions hours before a board meeting, so that's what happened this time, and that is one reason that we're not going forward tomorrow by, you know, just taking, putting the signs back up, as much as that does feel compelling. Okay, so, the last thing I want to say, we all feel very passionate about these issues, I want us all just to demonstrate, board members, audience members, everybody, that we do not think of our vulnerable students as problems, that we are not going to let this devolve into a fight, into inappropriate language, into, and, you know, I say this as a board member who frequently finds myself getting very agitated, so, this applies to all of us, I hope we can all make that commitment to each other, if it does start to devolve, you know, we may take a five-minute recess so that we can all sort of start breathing and then come back out into public. Again, this will be an hour of public comment, and we will follow up after we give our committee reports with an unlimited public comment, period. Now I have to read the little statute, excuse me, let me find it, sorry. The Highland Park Public Board of, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments, Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings, it is 8:15, we welcome public comment at this time. Oh, please sign in and state your name, address, at least write your name, please, on that, print, print, print your address for our records, we're not going to publish like a bulletin with everybody's address, but we like to have it in our records, if you're a student, feel free not to write your address, just write HP student, okay? Thank you so much, now I'll stop.
I promise I won't take up the whole hour. I'll leave a little bit of time. My name is Austin Moriel, good evening, everybody, my pronouns are he, him, and his, I've lived in Highland Park for 10 years, and my wife and I have two teenage daughters in the Highland Park School District, I work for two nonprofits in town, Neighbor Corps Reentry Services, and Who Is My Neighbor Incorporated, for whom I run the Cave After School Center for middle schoolers, and I previously worked as a lunch and recess paraprofessional at Irving Elementary Primary School, and I'm a proud trans man. I'm here tonight with Gender Equity HP because I care about the kids of this town, I have worked with the kids of this town, and I care about them, I care about the gender non-binary kids, I care about the cisgender kids, I care about the trans kids, I care about all of the kids, and I'm here tonight to ask the adults of Highland Park to do right by all the kids and show them that Highland Park really is the welcoming, accepting town we claim to be. Gender Equity HP started only this past Thursday, we are an advocacy and organizing group for gender and LGBTQ+ equity in Highland for gender and LGBTQ+ equity in Highland Park schools that has over 80 members already, with the immediate goal of getting multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms reinstated at Bartle. Our group represents students at all grade levels, LGBTQ+ families and community members, as well as fierce allies. We have supporters from Garden State Equality, the Pride Center of New Jersey, the Reform Church of Highland Park, the Institute for Personal Growth, the Unitarian Society of East Brunswick, Rutgers, High Tops of Princeton, the Straight and Gay Alliance of Highland Park High School, and many, many other groups and institutions. We also created an online petition to gauge support for the reinstatement of multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms at Bartle. We posted the petition just yesterday, on a Sunday morning, a Sunday of yard sales, beach outings, family gatherings. In other words, a day when people weren't at their computer looking at petitions. Nonetheless, in this very short amount of time, the petition has already received over 450 signatures. I hope you can see that this large number of people signing and the incredible number of people who came here tonight, most of them wearing transgender and non-binary flag stickers, support Gender Equity's mission, as listed on the flip chart. Specifically, our mission is, "We respectfully demand that the district immediately restore at least one multi-stall, all-gender bathroom on each floor of Bartle Elementary School. For equity, health, and safety of all students, it is imperative that the restrooms are the same in type and accessibility as the other multi-stall bathrooms and labeled 'all-gender bathroom', with any other signage removed. We request that appropriate communication and support be put in place, but without further delay to restoring these facilities. We assert that these actions are in accordance with New Jersey State law, Highland Park School District Policy 5756, and the district's mission of equity, excellence, and inclusion." Gender Equity HP has thought carefully about the many different dimensions of this issue and has organized our comments and thoughts around five fundamental reasons why multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms must be restored immediately at Bartle.
Thank you so much, Austin.
Hi, my name is Kristin Springer, and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I have lived in Highland Park for 13 years and have two children in the school district, including one that started at Bartle this year. I am also a professor at Rutgers and have done research on gender equity topics for over two decades. However, this is not just an academic issue for me or for many, many others in this town. As an LGBTQ family, my children and I are deeply affected by the gender policies in Highland Park and by the availability of accessible, equitable, and safe bathroom choices for all children. I am proud to speak here today as a member of Gender Equity HP, and I'll focus on point number one on our second clipboard, that the abrupt removal of multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms caused unintentional harm and a lack of safety that needs to be addressed now. So I think the best way to understand this is to talk about what it is really like for our kids not to have all-gender bathrooms. So to do that, I want to share some experiences and examples of what kids in our district have been through. Our district. These are our children. Your neighbor's kids, your friend's kids, maybe your kid. Our children. And you'll notice that many of us that are going to talk about kids today are not going to talk about specific children by name. That in and of itself is telling. It's not a safe enough world or a town right now for us to share the names of the transgender, non-binary children. That's telling. So I'll talk primarily about non-binary kids in town. First, just so we're all on the same page, non-binary means someone doesn't identify as male or female. This is a valid, true, recognized gender identity. Gender is a continuum. Just like the world doesn't only have atheists and fundamentalists, blacks and whites, fully-abled and fully-disabled, the world does not only have males and females. But all of these folks, everyone there, still needs to use the bathroom in peace, in safety, in a way that doesn't single them out as unusual or odd or anything other than needing to go to the bathroom. So where does that leave non-binary kids? Well, non-binary students are left with few good choices in our schools. They're left with choices that expose them to illness, that scare them, or where they get bullied. For example, in our schools, our schools, a non-binary elementary school child went to use the boys' room and was called a freak and teased by other children for just going to the bathroom. The same non-binary child used a different bathroom, and a child turned off the light, closed the door, blocked it, and locked them inside, telling them they needed to use a different bathroom and they were in the wrong place. This is our town. These are our children, and they just want to go to the bathroom safely. So, given this, imagine how amazing it was for these transgender and non-binary kids at Bartle to be welcomed with all-gender bathroom signs when the school year started. They felt seen. They felt loved. They could finally, finally go to the bathroom in peace. But then think how they felt when the signs were abruptly removed. Gender-diverse kids came home bawling. They reported the school doesn't love them, or, quote, "It isn't safe for them anymore." When well-intentioned parents tried to assuage their heartbreak, the kids' heartbreak, by saying, "Of course, they're loved," maybe it was just a legal thing. Maybe it was just because of the law they had to take the signs down. These gender-diverse kids cried that perhaps they were illegal, or they worried that being themselves was against the law. These gender-diverse kids came home sick every day since. Some of them have come home sick every day since. But I haven't talked about how it's been going to the bathroom, right, since these signs have been removed. So I learned just last night of a transgender boy at Bartle who was harassed in the boys' room, the bathroom that corresponds with his gender identity, because this boy transitioned at Bartle, and some people knew him as his gender assigned at birth. And he was told that he wasn't allowed in that bathroom anymore because it wasn't an all-gender bathroom anymore. This is a telling, telling problem with having removed all-gender bathrooms. So remember, these are our children. This is our town, right? This is not the Highland Park that I know and love. And honestly, it's not the Highland Park we say we are or that I want us to be. And I really, really hope that this is not the Highland Park that any of you or any of us want. So if we truly care about our children and we want them to have at least access to the most basic, fundamental right to use the bathroom, please, don't cause them any more harm, and please just reinstate multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms on each floor at Bartle immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Stephanie Sasso. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm a queer mom with two third graders at Bartle, co-author of the district gender policy, and a psychologist who consults to school districts around the state on gender inclusion. I want to thank the board and Ann, thank you for your statement. I think there's a lot of relief here, knowing that we've been heard. And I just want to say, many of us who've come here to speak tonight, we are going to go forward and speak, and I think in large part because there are... If we've all learned anything from this, I think it's that too many have not been heard in our schools and in our community. So we need this opportunity to speak and be heard. And if we're preaching to the choir, that's okay because this choir is big, but it has not been loud enough. We need to stay loud. We need to stay together. We need to stick together. And I'm going to be counting on all of you to do that in the months and years to come. But I want to thank you for being here now. And I am going to go ahead with my speech because it's my job to tug at the heartstrings. That's what I do. So, with that in mind. And also, just want to thank everyone on the board for all the service you do for our beloved children. And I'm sure I speak for everyone in the room. Thank you. Okay, skipping ahead. This is a true story woven from many true stories about a high school student named Kai. When Kai was born, they were assigned female based on their body. As a child, Kai never felt female, but the other option, male, didn't work either. When Kai was a kid, there were no other options. In the early stages of puberty, they, Kai, became severely depressed, and they stayed that way. Kai did not know why. No one did. Kai understood they were non-binary for the first time at 11. At 16, they said it out loud for the first time in my office. Kai asked their parents to refer to them as "they." Kai's dad yelled and hit them. From then on, he called them "it." Girls shouted "fat dyke" while they beat Kai up in the girls' bathroom. Kai was sent to a single-stall bathroom with the words "all-gender" and later "fat dyke freak" written on the door. Kai tells me they are going to die. They agree to wait a week. Desperately, I call Kai's school. At the meeting, Kai is called several pronouns and several names by teachers, administrators, counselors, and parents. Some roll their eyes, but others are honestly trying. I ask Kai to wait outside. No one at the table believes non-binary identity is real. Still, I tell them Kai needs the right pronouns and an all-gender bathroom that other kids use. Nothing in this school signals that Kai exists. Here's the good news, I tell them. You don't have to believe Kai to save their life. Kai didn't have a well-educated activist mom. They did not thrive like some of our amazing, non-binary, and transgender students. They did not speak at forums or mentor younger kids. They did not run for office, become a faith leader, parent, or artist. They did not even live. See, LGBTQ+ folks, we can seem a little frantic because it always feels like the more time we wait, the more kids we lose. Some current Bartle kids begged for all-gender bathrooms as early as kindergarten, and their parents and I have been asking since then, too. We celebrated when the bathrooms arrived. Kids high-fived their ally friends and came home beaming ear to ear. Moms called each other in tears. There are trans and non-binary kids at Bartle that we know, but there are more that we don't. Some who don't tell us, most who don't yet know themselves. But they are all watching. They are all watching to see who we see and who we don't. They are looking for the signs, noting when the world is covered in rainbows, but at school, there is not one pride flag in sight. My kids noticed when their teachers kept changing the date for me to read a children's book about Pride Month, then finally canceled it. Nevertheless, I persisted. With me leading the way, like a pride superhero, the second graders were all smiles, waving their flags in our mini-pride parade and demanding that I wear the big pride flag like a cape. But they saw their teachers' fear and felt their anxiety, and they wondered what could be wrong with a rainbow parade where everyone can be themselves. Some quotes from our wise Bartle youth. "But why did they take them down, Mama? It doesn't make any sense. But we have all-gender bathrooms at church with stalls. They will never put them back because nobody cares but us." Parents need gender school. No one knows my friends exist, not even the teacher. Parents have been up late since Tuesday, wiping tears and giving extra hugs. But these are the stories of the lucky ones. Next time you are outside Bartle at dismissal, look around. None of us knows which child is Kai. One has a disability. They're an athlete. They're neuroatypical. They're popular. They're undocumented. Their family fears for their black, non-binary child. It's not safe to be out. One is 16. Another is 6. We may not see them, but our kids do. Our kids are watching, always thinking, "That could be me." Me, who is different. Me, with my learning disability. Me, with darker skin. Me, with gay parents. Me afraid all day. Me in tears. Me bullied and harmed. Me totally invisible. Three little words say so much more than "all-gender bathroom." They say, "There are many genders. They all have value." You, all of you, have value. No one in this school is invisible. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to take a moment to just thank you all very much for responding to the residents here. My name is Laura Hoag.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yep. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. And I am here as a psychotherapist who specializes in trauma, addiction, and gender issues. But I'm also a community organizer and a social work activist focusing on increasing equity and inclusion for trans youth and specifically, elementary-school-aged children. My office is here in Highland Park, and it's a place that I consider to be my home away from home. I love it here, and I'm really proud to be here with you all tonight. I was recently invited to become a member of Gender Equity HP because of my work as a psychotherapist and more so because of my experience community organizing. I'll be speaking to the common values that exist in this community, specifically, our commitment to all of our children's physical and emotional safety and how that relates to the multi-stall bathroom and the all-gender bathroom signs at Bartle. So as impossible as this is to do, I'm hoping that you can try to imagine being a transgender student in your school. What is the day like leaving the safety of a loving home, hopefully, right? And going into a school where there is a high probability that you're going to hear negative comments about who you are. Imagine the joy you feel when the principal of your school announces a multi-stall, all-gender bathroom. You walk into the school. You see signs that affirm who you are. You see the possibility for a conventional school year. You're a second grader, so you can think about rec soccer and Minecraft, right? And not have to worry about this constant reminder that you're different. You feel worthy, and your anxiety lifts. And then a few days later, imagine you walk into that school, and it's gone. You see the signs are down. Nobody seems to understand what's happening, and so your friends start to ask you what's going on, or worse, start teasing you for it. Meanwhile, other kids around you are just laughing and playing. After school, you're quiet on your walk home. Your mother takes you for ice cream, and you both should have known it was too good to be true. Imagine being a transgender child from an unsupportive home watching all of this happen, knowing that for sure, it's just too risky to be you, that the adults and friends in your life are uncomfortable with you and your body. Imagine trying to sort that out in an elementary school, seven years old, on your own. In the last two years, I had the opportunity to work with a number of transgender children here in New Jersey, mostly between the ages of 4 and 11. I've also had the pleasure of working with their parents and their families. Sometimes this has been as their gender therapist, and sometimes this has been in an activist role or as an organizer and advocate in school districts. Parents of transgender children have an impossible role. They must push for their kids' safety all the while knowing that their very own activism might in and of itself make their kids more vulnerable. The decision to be here is not one that has been lightly made for anyone in the room, but mostly for the parents of transgender kids, even more so for the kids themselves. Every word written, every poster created, every meeting attended is centered on their children's privacy and safety. This is uncomfortable at best, but more often, it's a terrifying and traumatic line to walk. And that's nothing compared to the experiences of... of the kids themselves. When I first began organizing, I had this mentor who would constantly ask me to find my center. I'd become overwhelmed with the work. I'd get emotional. I'd get frustrated. And she'd look at me, and she'd say, "Dear heart, find your center." And she'd help me to breathe. Other times, I would come to her confused about how hard we were pushing forward. As a person with many privileges, I was worried about too much discomfort and that it might drive our allies away from the movement. "Are we moving too fast for the community?" I would say to her. And she would, again, she would say, "Find your center, Laura." She'd say, "Who are you centering your work on? Are you centering on the comfort of the privileged? Or are you centering on the needs of the oppressed?" For 20 years, that has been my north star. When I'm scared or defeated, I return to my center. Inside my center is my values, right? Honesty, integrity, courage, empathy, equity. And then I ask myself, "Who are my decisions catering to? Are they catering to the privileged or are they catering to the vulnerable?" It's impossible to make everybody comfortable. That's not what we're asking. What we're demanding is that you find your center. Because being a leader in this movement means centering on the safety of all of our children, not the comfort of those who fear change. I am so inspired by our community tonight, especially the transgender youth who are here with us and who are carrying far more emotional labor into this conversation than anybody else. I want you all to know that you're not alone, that we are here. We're not going anywhere. We see you. We honor you. We stand with you. And we respectfully demand the return of all-gender multi-stall bathrooms to each floor at Bartle. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dr. Erica Ryan, and I am, my pronouns are she, her, hers. And I'm a parent of a Bartle third grader and the director of the Gender and Sexuality Studies Program at Rider University. And I'm speaking here to our fourth point on this list of reasons that we want these bathrooms reinstated. Highland Park has proudly touted our commitment to all students and our leadership in gender inclusivity, which is perhaps best exemplified by the unanimous school board decision to pass a policy strongly supporting transgender student rights. As quoted in a 2016 NJ.com article on the bathroom policy at that time, a Highland Park school board member stated, "In Highland Park, we pride ourselves on our diversity, a place where we want everyone to be welcome, to be themselves." The board member went on to say, "The borough has never been afraid to take a stand for progressive values, even if it meant making a little noise." I saw this news coverage in 2016, and it was notable. At the time, I was looking for a new town to move to with my family. And it was this commitment to progressive values and to the LGBTQ+ community that actually helped us make the decision to call Highland Park our home later that year. The bathroom policy exemplified the community I thought I was moving to, the school district I was bringing my child to to begin kindergarten. But there are other examples. The district has applied to be one of a dozen schools to pilot the Garden State Equality's LGBTQ-Inclusive Curriculum in 2020. Governor Murphy signed the LGBTQ-Inclusive Curriculum into law in January of this year, making New Jersey the second state in the nation to require public schools to teach about the struggles and the triumphs of the LGBT community. This curriculum pilot program would allow Highland Park to be on the leading edge of educational history, providing our district with early data, resources, and professional development. We fully support this application. We're really thrilled about that. And if it is successful, it would truly position Highland Park as an innovative leader in this field. That's the Highland Park I want us to be. And I believe, and I think we're seeing, that this is the Highland Park our Board of Education wants us to be. But we simply can't promote the district in this way until we rectify this reversal. So reinstituting at least one multi-stall, all-gender bathroom on each floor at Bartle is a clear next step in our proud tradition of making, of being a leader in gender inclusivity, even if it means making a little noise. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, how do you write at the same time and talk to a... Oh, hi, all of you. My name is Karen Johnston, and I am the minister at the Unitarian Society in East Brunswick. My pronouns are she, hers, and I welcome they as well. I am here because the second-largest contingent of folks represented in my congregation live in this fine place. And I'm here also because the sense of community and civic engagement that you all embody makes my heart sing over and over. It makes me a little bit sad that my church's parsonage isn't here. I know that you all know already that the world holds both meanness and isolation as well as connection and kindness and inclusivity. And we live our lives, right, navigating. I believe it is our duty, no matter who we are, to resist meanness, to lessen isolation, and that it is the duty, not only of human beings but of civic institutions, to cultivate connection, kindness, and inclusivity. And my heart was singing. Before I became a minister, I was a clinical social worker. And so to hear a superintendent speak about social, emotional well-being and health as the heart of what you're doing is amazing. With the short time here, I just want to put forward what might be possible. In my congregation, we have a multi-stall bathroom. We have two multi-stall bathrooms with signage that says "all gender" and images of the equipment that is in each of those rooms. Toilets, pictures of toilets, pictures of urinals, handicapped access symbol and baby-changing symbols in both rooms. And this is what we, as a multi-generational community, from the littleness to the atiuses, live with, work with, are with, have our bodies in, recognizing that we all have bodily functions that we have to, sometimes in public, take care of. But these spaces need not and should not be where society declares that gender is determinant. It's just not necessary. We've lived in boxes like this. We need not do that. I am so glad that you share my worry about the message that comes from putting up signs and taking them down. That is heartening. And of course, I think you share my worry that it is not just the worry for the impact of that action on children who are non-binary or the ones who don't yet know themselves or we don't yet know, but on all the children for the message it sends, the bad behaviors it condones, unintentionally, but still true. So I raise up and support your righting this wrong and hope that you will find a way to not just replace one all-gender bathroom, but one on each floor as a way to live into your commitment to that social, emotional health. Show them who cares. Thank you. I think we have some inspiring young people who are gonna come up now, if you're, if you all are good.
Wonderful. If you could tell us your names. No need to say your address.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Tobias Thaler. You guys can call me Toby. And my pronouns are they and them. Should we just start reading?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm a member of the Gender Equity HP Facebook group, but I'm also here representing the Sexuality and Gender Alliance in the high school as one of its two co-presidents. I'm here today to talk about Bartle's gender-neutral bathroom dispute as a trans, non-binary student, mostly from my own personal experience, because this is the perspective that I can, this is the only perspective I can speak from. I think it's easy for cis people to argue that these issues from the standpoint of gender skepticism. And I could stand here all night and talk about the metaphysics of gender and what it means to be trans or non-binary. But in my opinion, trans people's existence is just a fact of life. And getting stuck on theoretical philosophy only halts productive discussion. For me, this is... For me, this is purely an issue of safety and basic human dignity. I've been living and identifying as non-binary for a few years now. And I'm privileged enough to be in a situation where I'm not really deadnamed or bullied anymore, really, because of my gender identity. But when it comes to bathrooms, I can feel all of this just quickly just go away. Because for me, and many like me, using binary restrooms can be really risky. Just within the last couple of months, there was an incident when I was in San Francisco doing service projects. And two other non-binary friends and I were harassed in a men's room in a public park a block away from the biggest historically queer neighborhood in the country. Because I don't present as female, women's rooms can also be very uncomfortable and sometimes humiliating to use. For many trans, non-binary, closeted, questioning, intersex, and gender non-conforming individuals, gender-neutral restrooms are an absolute necessity. When they're not there, it can send a message that we don't belong in that space, which I think is the wrong message to be sending in a town that prides itself on its inclusivity and welcomeness, especially in schools where children can internalize these messages. Inclusivity has to include gender-variant people and by extension, gender-variant children, or else it's simply incomplete and insufficient. Therefore, we should be protecting these vulnerable children at all costs instead of letting them be intimidated and alienated in bathrooms that are uncomfortable and at times unsafe to use.
Hello. My name is Grace. My pronouns are she, her. I identify as a lesbian. And this is a speech that was co-written by me and another member of the high school Saga group. There's a common misconception that non-binary and trans people only start identifying as non-binary or trans as they reach the end of their adolescence. However, from a young age, non-binary, like trans and non-binary people's brains are often much more similar to the brains of those who possess like the gender they identify with rather than the ones they were assigned at birth. It is crucial that in this time in their lives, the Bartle students are exposed to the experiences and identities that could define who they are. In short, how is one supposed to realize one's gender without knowing all of the options? One of the reasons that most trans and non-binary individuals tend to come out around this time is because, at a younger age, many children in a school like Bartle, students get most of their information from adults or their school. And because the students are, A, not being taught about non-binary and trans people and their accomplishments throughout history at a younger age, and B, not being informed that there are other options that aren't male or female. It can take much longer to figure out one's identity when you have to do it on your own, when you have to realize that there might be options outside of what you've been given. And all gender bathrooms, gender-neutral bathrooms, are also important for queer students or gay students or students who don't fit the mold of what we consider to be masculine or feminine. Students who don't, students like a feminine man or a masculine woman. They are often harassed in restrooms or, and are often victims to verbal and physical abuse because of the fact that they don't fit in with what we think they should or how we think they should act. And to conclude, it's incredibly important for kids of all backgrounds to have the option to be other than what they are almost always given and to know that identities exist outside of our narrow-minded ideas.
Thank you, Grace. Down it goes. Hi, my name is Adrian Schilling. My pronouns are he and him. I'm a member of Saga. I'm also a representative of the Gender Equity HP Facebook group. So we demand multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms are necessary for full equity and inclusion for a wide-ranging, intersectional group of vulnerable students. Gender-segregated bathrooms and segregated, single-stall, all-gender bathrooms do not provide full inclusion and represent a failure of cultural sensitivity for those students who may belong to some of the groups listed later on. Further, the absence of these bathrooms increases the already tremendously high risk of bullying, depression, anxiety, and suicidality for some of the most vulnerable children in our schools. So groups affected include students with non-binary identities, gender other than male or female, students who are particularly, pardon me, partially out across the gender spectrum, students who are closeted and/or questioning across the gender spectrum and/or for those whom are using the bathroom of their affirmed gender, including single-stall and, single-stall, all-gender bathrooms, could out them/put them in danger. Students who will, one day, identify as non-binary or transgender and are currently taking in the social messages that will become part of their sense of themselves and of the value of gender-diverse people. All students who will identify across the LGBTQ+ spectrum at any point. Any student who may be harassed or viewed as unwelcome in the binary bathrooms due to gender non-conforming presentation or physical attributes, regardless of their identity. Intersex students, the 1.7% of the population who are not biologically male or female, which is actually similar to the percentage of those with red hair, which is pretty interesting. Siblings of any, yeah, siblings of any above students And finally, those whose culture, or cultural or religious traditions include gender expression, clothing, behaviors, or practices that are perceived as outside Western gender norms. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Yeah. You're our queen.
Thank you for that infusion of incredible wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Actually, I'm a little shocked I'm the only one that's brought a phone up here. So, old-school, you guys. What's happening? Can you all hear me? Okay, great. Hi, everybody. I'm gonna sign this when I'm done, because you're right, writing and talking is awkward. Uh, there we go. All right, so. Hello, Highland Park Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Alex Akins. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the senior program manager of High Tops, a Princeton, New Jersey nonprofit that focuses on adolescent sexual health education and LGBTQ-plus support. I'm also a resident of Highland Park. I'm here today to express my support for returning multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms to Bartle Elementary School. This support is informed by 10 years of work with LGBTQ-plus youth, a growing number of whom are identifying as transgender and non-binary. High Tops offers a wide variety of programming for LGBTQ-plus youth, including young people from Highland Park. Perhaps my favorite is the annual New Jersey Trans Youth Forum. This is, yeah. This is an all-day conference created by and for transgender and non-binary youth. That's right, by and for. A group of trans and non-binary young people help me plan everything, and every year, the decision is made that all bathrooms are converted to all-gender bathrooms for the day, not just one or two, all of them. And to my knowledge, there's not been a single negative incidence arising from this practice, but there have been countless positive ones. High Tops spends a lot of time getting feedback from the young people that we serve, big questions, like, what can society do to be more affirming? What do adults, what do you wish adults knew about you? And what do you need? I'd like to share some of their answers with you regarding their experiences in bathrooms at school and at the Trans Youth Forum. When asked what would make them feel safe at school, a group of middle school students said they wanted all-gender bathrooms to be less rare and conspicuous. "I can only go to the bathroom in the nurse's office," said M12. "Everyone knows why I'm going all the way across school to pee. It's embarrassing. I wish there were a gender-neutral bathroom everywhere there's a boy and a girl bathroom." J13 was told the nurse's bathroom was their mandated gender-neutral option. They said the nurse's bathroom, oh, they said, "The nurse's bathroom isn't even close to the lunchroom. I had to go to the bathroom, and I was late for my class, and I got detention, but it's the only bathroom I have." D13 says, "I won't go to the bathroom if I'm not at home. I got a really bad infection last year because I was always holding up." K12 told me about a group of peers who cornered him in the hallway, pinning him to the lockers and demanding personal and sensitive information of him. They began by asking pointedly why his hair was so short and why he wore baggy sweatshirts even when it was hot out. K says, "I tried to kind of laugh it off and say it was just my style, but the questions intensified, and the group pinned him so he couldn't escape. They just kept saying, 'What are you? Are you a lesbian? Do you think you're a dude? What are you? Where's your D?'" I've elected not to repeat the word that they used with K, but I'm sure you can guess what it was. "They just wouldn't let me leave," he continued. "I didn't even have an answer for them because I hadn't even figured out that I was maybe trans yet. Later, K would tell me, 'I hate using the girls' bathroom at school, but if I use the boys' bathroom now, everyone will know I'm trans, and those kids will know that they were right about me.'" A21 told me, "Going to the Trans Youth Forum was the first time I didn't have to think about going to the bathroom. I could just pee, just like everyone else. No drama, no anxiety, no weighing my safety against my identity. I could just exist." S15 said, "Even cisgender people can use gender-neutral bathrooms. It's not just for us. They benefit too." And S is right. The Quisten School Climate Survey tells us that schools with affirming and inclusive practices, such as having a GSA or providing queer-inclusive curriculum, see an increase in academic success and attendance for all students, not just those who identify as LGBTQ-plus. When asked what they wish they could say to school administrators, S said, "Please make these changes now. Don't wait until you have a trans kid at your school to become affirming. Anticipate us. We're not going away. One small action from you could save our lives." New Jersey's youth are telling us what they need. I think that Highland Park is taking steps to hear them, but I want you to hear them a little louder. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Dale Booth, and I have been a resident of Highland Park for several years now. I'm an active member in this community, and I know many of you from the dog park, from my work at Rutgers, or from coaching your children's soccer teams. My wife and I ended up here by circumstance, but we've chosen to stay and to put down roots here because we want to be a part of an inclusive community such as this. I am speaking today because I identify and I present as non-binary. I use they/them pronouns, and I also use she/her pronouns. And I want to impart onto you the sheer necessity of having an all, an all-gender, multi-stall bathroom at Bartle Elementary School. I can personally attest to the levels of anxiety and stress that come with using a bathroom that does not correspond fully with one's gender. Every time I approach a bathroom, I have to make a strategic calculation. I have to consider my location, the time of day, the number of people around, and who I am with before I decide which gendered bathroom I should go into. I have to ask myself which bathroom, women's or men's, will be the safest option for me, given the circumstances. I do this not out of some unwarranted or unfounded fear, but because I am regularly questioned and harassed when I use public gendered bathrooms. I witness the stares and the scowls. I hear the gasps of surprise, the snickering, and sometimes the unrestrained aggression that my presence in a gendered space elicits. I am told repeatedly, "You do not belong here." I share my experiences with you to shed light on the very real, lived reality of our trans and gender non-conforming children. While my issues with gender, gendered bathrooms have been both harrowing and exhausting, I am an adult, right? I have had time to build up the thick skin and to create the coping strategies that are needed and necessary for me to exist within this identity. We simply cannot ask the same of our children. We cannot knowingly place our seven, eight, nine-year-olds, or our middle schoolers or high schoolers for that matter, in situations in which they need to actively consider their safety in order to do something as mundane as using the toilet. Our schools should be places where they can freely and safely use a bathroom without giving it a second thought. I know some of you will argue that a single occupancy stall will be enough, but quite frankly, it's not. Using such a bathroom marks our non-binary and transgender out as other, as different from their peers, and this is the last thing these kids need. What they do need is a space to grow, to build confidence, and to get comfortable in their own skin. An all-gender, multi-stall bathroom on each floor of Bartle Elementary is a simple way to help them in this process. Non-binary and trans children have a long and unfortunately challenging road ahead of them. Don't let our schools number among these challenges. Let our schools be a place where these kids can be their most authentic, brilliant, and beautiful selves, right? It will serve them, and it will serve our community well. Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
It's good going after another shorter person.
That's always a problem.
Helpful. Uh, hi, my name is Shannon Tomasula. I identify as queer and non-binary. My pronouns are they/them and theirs. I live here in Highland Park, and I am a stepparent to two third graders who currently attend Bartle. I've chosen to add my voice to this discussion here tonight to provide some perspective and insight into what early childhood gender identity validation and inclusion can mean. I specifically want to speak to the idea of adaptation and what it has meant to me. I'm 43 years old, and I only recently came out as non-binary, less than a year ago. I realize I may be a bit late to the gender diversity party coming out at this point in my life.
I'm too late.
Millennials and younger, thank you for having me. But, but when I was growing up, inclusive gender identity-affirming language, let alone bathrooms or social spaces in general, just didn't exist. There were no non-binary, gender-queer, or agender identities. There were no pronoun choices. If being told you were a girl didn't feel right, that didn't really matter. It certainly wasn't something that anyone talked about anyway, or seemingly would have understood anyway. It wasn't a thing to anyone but you, or rather, me. But I adapted. I learned to go along with what was expected and adapt to my limited choices. I fit myself into the spaces I was given, and I didn't question the lack of choices before me, but who I knew myself to be got further and further away from the reality that I was forced into. With each adaptation, we begin to question and lose sight of who we really are, and we take in this message that we're not entitled to want, let alone need, something different. Don't get me wrong, adaptability is a great life skill. It makes you shift gears and make the most, make the best of situations you can't always control. However, when adaptability is born out of a sense of invalidation, fear, and, at worst, survival, it robs you of your autonomy, your sense of self. Adaptability can be the antithesis of entitlement. The more it's relied upon to make a situation bearable, the more it invalidates your needs and who you truly are. Over time, it becomes harder and harder to remember that you matter, that your needs are important, that you are important and deserve to be heard, and to feel safe, just like everyone else, not because you are different, but because you are a person and you deserve to feel that way. Our kids have choices now. We know better. We can do better. Multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms are a no-brainer. They don't threaten options for anyone, but provide the appropriate option for those needing it most, and are entitled to it. They won't solve the ills of the world, or all of the challenges our kids are likely to face, gender-related or not, but they will be one less lesson in forced adaptability, and therefore, one more example that who they are matters, that their needs are valid and not out of the ordinary from anyone else's, and that they are entitled to be themselves always. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand the clock is ticking towards our one-hour mark, correct? Okay.
How many, may I interject? There are a number of, a certain number of planned speakers that are still forthcoming?
Yes.
How many might that be?
If we could do two more, then we can pause. That would work for one. I don't want to say two, but one, so you can...
How does the board feel about allowing two more to go after this?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, I think there's concerns.
We have a couple more after that.
No, no, oh, I'm sure. And there may be people here who are not part of the pre-arranged. Yeah.
Everyone.
Everyone is here, yes. Okay. I want to be faithful to my board colleagues and my promise we would get through the hiring of teachers and, you know, that sort of thing. But, yeah, let's do, so you and two more would be a natural breaking point.
I want Pastor Seth to be able to go and then head out.
Well, Pastor Seth definitely will. Two more after Francesca?
Preach.
Yeah, 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 that's fine, yeah. And then we'll take a pause for board, other board business. Okay.
I'm relatively brief. So, my name is Francesca Maruska. I am a Highland Park resident. I am a Bartle parent in a multiracial family. I'm a member of the LGBTQ-plus community, and I'm actually a professional sexual and reproductive health educator as well. And I can't tell you what a priority equitable inclusion for the entire community is for me and for my family. And I'm going to be addressing point number three, and that's multi-stall, all-gender bathrooms are beneficial to the entire school and the wider community, while adding options for all students. I'm laughing because who said you're reading off a paper? Was it you? That's because I can't see my phone well enough to read. So, all-gender bathrooms are like a big sign on the front of a school that says, "Everyone belongs here." They send the message that we see you, all of you. They also send the message that we see children as children and not as sexualized and needing protection from the opposite sex. It sends the message that we see our boys not as potential predators, but as those trusted to make positive choices and held to the same standards of behavior and respect as all students. It sends a message that we do not view our girls as fragile and need of segregation for their own protection. A mix of binary bathrooms and single-stall bathrooms with gender-neutral, multi-stall bathrooms also sends the message that students most comfortable in a gender segregated or a completely private bathroom space are welcome and do have safe options without marginalizing students for whom single-stall options might out them or jeopardize their safety. And it tells students with disabilities or other special needs that they also have access to different types of facilities, which they will share with other students who need or use them for different reasons. And it sends the message that it is possible to coexist safely and peacefully. Everyone is seen, and everyone matters. According to the Family Acceptance Project at a San Francisco State University, gender affirmation and larger LGBTQ-plus inclusiveness benefits all students, and thus its absence actually harms all students. And it's been shown that in students specifically with Gay-Straight Alliance, like our Saga group in our high school, in these schools, students are less likely to drop out, less likely to experience depression, more likely to have higher self-esteem, and more likely to succeed in higher education. And I understand that is not specifically about gender-neutral bathrooms, but it speaks to the need for inclusive environments, and modeling respect, kindness, and inclusion benefits everyone in the educational environment. And the second part of this is that all students suffer in a school environment in which some students feel unsafe and experience trauma. The sudden withdrawal of the gender-neutral bathrooms is the ultimate microaggression by the adults that are there to educate and foster in an inclusive learning environment, increasing the stress experienced not just by gender non-conforming students, but also students who experience minority stress. According to the Trevor Project, affirming adults are critical in breaking through minority stress for LGBTQ-plus youth. In fact, increased support from others can decrease the risk of negative mental health outcomes. And what better way for the Bartle school to show its support of our children than by immediately reinstating the multi-stall, gender-neutral bathrooms? That's it. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna speak without the mic. I guess you're right. All right. So, I'm not, I'm not gonna reiterate a lot of the points, but I do want to introduce myself quickly. My name is Dr. Anne Gregory. I'm a child psychologist and educational researcher at Rutgers. But I'm speaking as a parent of a third grader, and I go by she/her/hers. My wife and I have a third-grade son at Bartle who identifies as cisgender, and he is definitively in support of the multi-stall, gender-inclusive bathrooms. So, he wanted me to make that clear. So, we know the stakes are high. We've heard a lot about that tonight. And I would say the research backs a lot of the statistics around the microaggressions and risk for suicide ideation and depression and school dropout and absenteeism. But look, we're here standing with a strategic plan. We saw goal two tonight that said, "Cultural responsiveness." And this is all interconnected. The goal reads, I'll read it again, "The district will ensure the inclusion and support of students' volabilities, races, cultures, religions, belief systems, sexual orientations, genders, and gender identities, and socioeconomic background." So, we must walk our talk, and schools across the nations are locking arms around creating policies that are considered sexual orientation, gender, identity-inclusive. And as Francesca just said, so to reiterate, school policies send powerful signals to all students and staff. So, I do want to say that, looking through lots of research in the past week, there were some very good studies showing that in, when there are such policies, there's positive ripple effects on all kids, okay? So, not just the transgender youth. And I think this is important for us to be clear about, that there's an accumulating body of research showing inclusive and supportive policies for those students in, in some studies tend to experience less bullying and victimization overall. So, why might that be? So, how, I would contend that these policies are giving us a signal to everybody in the school, and this has been brought up again and again tonight, so let me conclude and say, think of these as signals to everyone that we, as a community, value diversity, stigma-free spaces, integration, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Step aside. Pastor Seth.
Thank you so much. Thank you, board. And Seth Cophardale, one of the pastors at the Reformed Church of Highland Park. I just wanted to acknowledge, this is a holy space tonight, to sit here for this length of time and hear people share from the depth of their hearts about stuff that matters to their children, to all of our children, not just the sharing, but the listening, too. I thought your opening words, Anne, were very disarming, and I appreciate them so much. They're acknowledging kind of the feeling of the town, but then to continue to hear the depth of the pain, and it's, it's a pretty special place to be. I really feel that. I did want to say, though, that, you know, after this kind of unfolded this week, and I spoke to one church family, you know, I said, "Should I stop by and say a prayer for your kid, just to like, let your kid know that God loves them and that they're okay?" You know? It's that level of, of feeling for, for some children, you know, that they need to remember that at the very core of what their image is, that they're beloved. So, for, for trans kids or non-binary kids, it's, it's really, you know, this is a big, big deal. But it's also a big deal for all the other kids, you know, and the challenges and questions that other second graders ask the cisgender kids, like, it's really important for them, too. So, I was just thinking, I don't want to repeat anything that was said tonight, and I understand that there's some legality stuff that, that could tie things up for a moment, and you heard the, the strong push, and, you know, I'd say, push through it and, like, deal with the legalities. If we, if we fall on the sake of breaking the law and the side of, of, you know, justice, then amen, let's do it. That kind of, amen. You know, let's, I, I, I think we could find some good lawyers to take that one on. That's no problem. But, but beyond that, something that most definitely doesn't have to wait past tomorrow morning is, like a pastor's word to a child holds a lot of weight, there's way more important than a pastor's word is a teacher's word. There's no one you look up to more than your teacher, you know? And if every teacher could see themselves as someone who could, could, could help the, all the kids think these things through. stigma-free spaces, integration, and equity. Thank you. Thank you. Step aside. Pastor Seth?
Thank you so much. Thank you, board. Seth Copperdale, one of the pastors at the Reformed Church of Highland Park. I just wanted to acknowledge, this is a holy space tonight, to sit here for this length of time and hear people share from the depth of their hearts about stuff that matters to their children, to all of our children. Not just the sharing, but the listening, too. I thought your opening words, Ann, were very disarming, and I appreciate them so much. They're acknowledging kind of the feeling of the town, but then to continue to hear the depth of the pain, and it's a pretty special place to be. I really feel that. I did want to say, though, that, you know, after this kind of unfolded this week, and I spoke to one church family, you know, I said, "Should I stop by and say a prayer for your kid, just to like, let your kid know that God loves them and that they're okay?" You know? It's that level of feeling for some children, you know, that they need to remember that at the very core of what their image is, that they're beloved. So, for trans kids or non-binary kids, it's really, you know, this is a big, big deal. But it's also a big deal for all the other kids, you know? And the challenges and questions that other second graders ask the cisgender kids, like, it's really important for them, too. So, I was just thinking, I don't want to repeat anything that was said tonight, and I understand that there's some legality stuff that could tie things up for a moment, and you heard the strong push, and, you know, I'd say, push through it and like, deal with the legalities. If we fall on the sake of breaking the law and the side of, you know, justice, then amen, let's do it. That kind of, amen. You know, I think we could find some good lawyers to take that one on. That's no problem. But beyond that, something that most definitely doesn't have to wait past tomorrow morning is, like a pastor's word to a child holds a lot of weight, there's way more important than a pastor's word is a teacher's word. There's no one you look up to more than your teacher, you know? And if every teacher could see themselves as someone who could help all the kids think these things through, starting tomorrow morning, you know, or at least the day after, so the teachers could get a clue about how to talk about it. But just to say, "Hey, this has been something that was accidentally hurtful. We're trying to do something good. Sometimes adults make mistakes. We're trying, we're going to get this right, and we're going to make it right soon, but every one of you needs to know, whatever your gender, all genders are beautiful genders that make up who we are." That doesn't have to wait for any sort of, you know, school board 1.17, whatever. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I don't want to really say anything concluding because, what is there to be said? Thank you for your honesty and your bravery in your comments, and this is a temporary moving back from public comment into our more boring, yet essential, school board. Okay. Sometimes they're interesting, but fortunately, we don't have anything too controversial of those things. All right, so we are moving on to our board committee reports. So, what we'll do is we'll go through each board committee, we'll have some discussion amongst ourselves, we'll open it up for another public comment, and after that, we will vote on our action items. There is not going to be a vote tonight about bathrooms. This is an information soliciting session. Yeah. Okay, there we go. So, is someone slated to give the finance report?
Oh, I'm doing finance.
Ah, excellent. Thank you, Rob.
Are we doing curriculum first, or?
Oh, wow. I misread the agenda. Curriculum! Sorry about that, Michelle.
Hi. I know, it's mine.
It's too much for me. I'm going to step out for a moment.
Sure, absolutely. Okay, so, we met on September 9th at 7:00 PM in --
Just get closer to the mic.
Is it on? Okay, so, our committee met on September 9th at 7:00 PM in the superintendent's office, and we were all there. It was a great time. The very first thing we did was review the agenda, but there's not, I'm going to borrow Ann's. There's not a whole lot to report on the agenda. It's pretty self-explanatory. It's field trips, as usual, is number one. Number two is the submission of the school's self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. And there was a pretty thorough conversation about the honesty with which the schools reported on self-assessment, so we understand what we need to work on, and that was good to hear. But we are also making lots of progress in our HIB reporting and our understanding of the HIB law. So, it's been a process, and I think we've all come to a conclusion that we are making lots of progress in the most recent years. Number three is the approval of Rutgers University Fall Conversation Cafe program. That is for adults, ELL, adults in the community, and that happens within the district buildings, which is a wonderful program, and I've known people that have benefited from that very much. Oh, and I should mention when that meets. Yeah, that is in the Bartle Media Center from 4:30 PM to 7:30 PM on Thursdays generally in October and November. Our second committee item was the middle school Spanish program, and we're having a little bit of what you would call crowding, I suppose, in the middle school Spanish program, and we're working on alleviating that crowding in the classroom. We're adding an additional sixth period to Ms. Terabell's schedule. And there's also another teacher, Raisa Soler, covering two middle school periods at the high school. Let's see. Number four, we discussed the Director of Curriculum and Instruction hiring process. I don't know if everyone's aware, but we had a resignation of our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We were sad to see Rebecca go, but we were happy to conduct interviews with several wonderful candidates. And so, we are hiring, I think that should be on the personnel agenda tonight, a really wonderful candidate. I just wanted to say a word or two about her. Her name is Michelle Rodriguez. She is a first-generation American from a Portuguese family, Portuguese parents. So, she grew up speaking Portuguese and learned English in school. So, she has firsthand knowledge of the ELL experience, and she is also a literacy coach in her previous positions. She is currently working in the Newark Public Schools Central Office, and so she comes to us with lots of experience with PD and other things related to literacy. The hiring process was pretty thorough. We had a room packed with educators and administrators and board members, and I think that we all, you know, maybe Ann could also add some words, but I think that we all felt good about Michelle, you know, immediately, and that she would be able to provide us with a really necessary presentation of first-generation Americanism, immigrant experience, ELL, all of that, that she, you know, comes to us with that cannot really be learned in a classroom. You know, she's bringing that with her, and so we're really excited for her to begin. Next, we have an update. So, we were given an update on our push to be able to recruit more minority candidates in every aspect. We would like to fill any positions that we have with people that are underrepresented. So, we spoke about some of our efforts. I don't have details available on those.
I can share a skinny version.
Thank you.
So, we are working with a consultant who specializes in recruitment and retention of minority candidates. One of the challenges that we have to confront is the fact that even if we can recruit minority candidates, we don't have a support system for them. We are a district that, frankly, most of our teachers are Caucasian, that doesn't have many minority educators within it, its ranks. So, this individual, who was previously a high school principal of Montclair, did a lot of work around building an academy, a support academy, for minority educators. So, what my vision is, is that working with Dr. Davis, Elaine Davis is her name, we'll be able to go out to career fairs and present an academy or some kind of a support system there for minority candidates who might be interested in coming to our district. So, that's really going to be the thrust.
Yeah, I mean, one of the most important things that we learned in that update was that it's one thing to recruit minority candidates, another thing to retain minority candidates, and the problem is, is that they don't feel welcome in a, you know, majority other workplace. They need to feel that they belong. So, that was really useful. I think it was really a productive effort moving forward, that we know that and that we move on that. So, the last item on the agenda discussed our personnel movement review. And again, maybe Dr. Taylor can fill this in with a little bit more detail?
Well, we had an inordinate number of teachers request maternity leave this year, so if your kids have a long-term replacement substitute, just rest assured, we go through the same vetting process for our replacement teachers as we do for our permanent teachers. We interview them by committee, and we actually require them to do demo lessons for us. So, we're doing the best we can. Fortunately, I don't believe, except for one particular leave, we have anyone out for more than a couple of months, and so it's not, we're not talking half-year to a full year.
Yeah, and it does happen quite often. Teachers have lives outside of our district. It happens. So, we're all very happy about all of the updates that we were given, and we hope to hear, you know, good news once our new Director of Curriculum and Instruction begins, that she is happy and feeling welcome. And that concludes my report.
Okay, I think we, does anybody have any questions? Let me see if I got the agenda order right. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about curriculum and instruction before we move on? No? Okay. Mr. Magaziner, would you care to?
Okay, good.
... the finance facility?
Yep. So, the finance committee did not meet, we were scheduled to meet this evening, but it was actually just me. So, we are putting off the items that we would have been discussing, and some of those are important ones, but those will be taken up at the October get-together. Going to the agenda items, numbers one through seven are our standard bill list. These are the general athletic cafeteria bill list, financial reports, et cetera. Number eight, eight through 12 are travel expense reports and board member travel, and I want to remind the board members that are going to be attending the school board's workshop convention next month that we need to abstain on the motion that pertains to us. Number 13 is professional services. These are contractors serving out-of-district special ed placement, one-on-one nursing services, both are for the ed services department. Number 14 is bedside instruction for a student temporarily housed at RU BHC. 15 is our annual non-public nursing services agreement. 16 and 17, we needed to purchase two new hot water heaters quickly because those that we had in Irving and at the middle school failed, and so we did go out to bid, got quotes, and have awarded the contract, or will be voting to award the contract for the new hot water heaters in those locations. And then number 18 is our acceptance of donations received through Donors Choose website to benefit small teacher projects across the district. That's it.
Wonderful. Any comments? Discussion?
Well, I was just going to ask, I mean, I think the number 18, the donors list, would be kind of nice just to hear some of the donations.
Right. And Scott or Linda, with the Donors Choose, do we have a list of, or a couple of highlights?
The list is on the board drive.
Couple of highlights.
The list is on the board drive. The list was provided to you.
Right, but I'm saying for the public to kind of know what teachers have, some of the general ideas that teachers are now able to implement as a result of the donations would be, I think, helpful.
I don't remember. I'm looking right.
We're not directly involved with this. The teachers go onto the Donors Choose website with a proposal. The public chooses whether they want to donate to it. We don't control the process?
I guess what I'm just asking is, it's great information for everyone to know. So, it'd be nice to highlight some of them, but if we don't?
Yeah, we can follow up with specific donations that they've made. If you follow your teachers on Twitter, they like to put those out there, but I'll do better than just researching Twitter. I'll actually survey the teachers and get a sense of what they, whether they did. I could say, share one example, just so people don't walk out thinking, you know, we're going out for anything. Ms. Youngs, one of our special education teachers at Bartle, worked with Donors Choose to create a calm-down corner. So, she looked for cushions, pillow, not pillows to lay down, sleep, but, you know, big fluffy pillows that the kids could recline, mats for the floor. So, those are the type of things that we might necessarily provide through supplies, but that they want to go out and do extra. But I'll track down the specifics and get it back to the board.
Thank you.
No problem.
Trying to open the folder, but of course, my computer will not respond, so.
Yeah.
That'd be great if next time we could do that. Other comments or questions about finance and facilities? Okay, moving on to personnel and communication. That is me. Most of these items are self-explanatory, substitutes, medical leave of absence, we have a resignation of an art teacher, but we have staff, a part-time art teacher, but we have staff in place to fill that gap, correct? We'll talk more about that later, or now?
Yes. Well, right now, is there any particular resolution you want to touch on?
Oh, I was just talking about number three. People are going to see there's a resignation of an art teacher at Bartle Elementary, and I wanted to show that.
Sure, so, I'll be recommending, I'm not privileged to share the name yet, but I'll be recommending a teacher to take over on October 2nd, which is the day after we return from Washington to break right away. She's actually a veteran teacher. She's already on staff. She's going to slip right into that position.
Great, so there should be no disruption in the art program?
No, she was actually previously an art teacher in our school district, so.
Wonderful.
She's got experience.
Great. Okay, four, five, six, there's some resignations, some maternity replacement appointments. I don't have anything specific to say about those, but Scott wanted to jump in on anybody in particular. Seven, eight, if you wanted to speak in more detail about any of the maternity replacements?
I just thought I'd share, I know I already mentioned the process by which we select our maternity replacement teachers, but when we get to recommending the hire of our new supervisor, I can share with you a couple of quotes or references.
Let's do that. Okay, I'm just looking to make sure that I haven't missed anything. Pretty self-explanatory, 15 through 18, I'll skip over 19 for now. That's the new director of, sorry, the new supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction for Humanities.
Correct.
I'll return to that. 20, 21, 22. Okay, we do have a media specialist resigning at Bartle, and we are hot on the trail.
We are, and I was just told by Ms. Knapp that we have a very viable candidate.
Oh, thank God.
I can't commit to anything, but I'm hopeful that we're going to actually have somebody. So, there's a relatively smooth transition. The members of the community who had kids in Bartle about three years ago may recall, one of our media center specialists left to take a position elsewhere, and we went for a period, I think almost half a year, when we didn't have a media specialist. We've been advertising, thanks to, I gave a shout-out to Judy Petribono, ex-board member. She's actually supervisor of librarians in South Brunswick, has steered me towards three outlets that the librarian people use, and so we posted there. I can't tell if this viable candidate came from one of those, through one of those organizations, but I hope to have somebody to recommend to the board by October 7th.
That's wonderful. I mean, we really appreciate you going all in on the librarian thing. I know it's always a challenge, for some reason. I guess, I mean, I understand districts around the state are reporting difficulty in hiring media specialists.
There are two areas, world language teachers, media specialists, and nurses.
Oh, and nurses.
Oh, and I should mention, learning disabled teaching consultants, LGTCs.
Yes, that has been a constant topic.
I think that's it for now.
Okay, all right. Media specialists, some more self-explanatory stipends, some interviews, volunteer coaches, staff at back-to-school night, cisgender orientation, sorry, two secs. Okay, there's a lot of stuff that's really self-explanatory, but I'm not going to read over. Okay, I think up through 41, with the one exception, are pretty self-explanatory. That's not to say that we haven't discussed them, we haven't looked at them, but they're not in need of much explanation. 19, would you like to say something about our proposed new hire?
Oh, I spoke with two references personally. One was a principal of a school that this person supported. Her role is currently in Newark to rove among a handful of school districts, not the entire district.
This is Michelle Rodriguez, by the way. This is for Michelle Rodriguez.
Correct, I'm sorry. Michelle Rodriguez.
Superintendent Supervisor of Curriculum Instruction Humanities.
She is a literacy support coach, and so in one of the schools she worked, in which she worked, the principal, Dr. Doug Petty, said he overwhelmingly recommends Michelle to this position, has a deep understanding of curriculum, standards, and growing teachers. Those are his words. Her ability to tailor her supports allows her to have an impact on teachers at all points in her career, and I was very happy, very happy to hear him say she has natural leadership qualities, has always gone above and beyond what's expected. I also spoke to a teacher who she coached, who said her work ethic's incredible, she works collaboratively with everyone on her team, and that's so vital, because we have a very small leadership team, we're 11-strong, so we don't work with each other, and we're done for. Great with data analysis, incredibly fair, and a great presenter. I should add that one thing we did differently this time around is we required the candidates to facilitate 15- to 20-minute workshops for us. We just gave them a prompt, said, "Hey, come on in, imagine we're K-12 teachers, small across the grade levels, and we know nothing about literacy, come on in." She rocked it. I think the personnel committee also felt that she did a great job.
It was amazing. She was able to tailor her presentation to kindergarten through 12, which is very unusual. She was able to like, suggest books and, you know, curriculum. She was able to suggest projects that would be applicable to students at all grade levels, which is very difficult to find in my limited experience, I think in yours, too.
The ranking high school teacher on the committee was very pleased with the recommendation. The ranking high school teacher on the committee was very pleased with the recommendation. And that's it, in terms of Michelle.
Thank you. Yes, so we're very excited about that. She speaks Portuguese as a native language, English, and conversational Spanish.
Conversational Spanish. She's going to come to the October 7th meeting.
Oh, wonderful.
She'll say a few words, you'll have a chance to place a face with her name. She has to give 30 days' notice to her school district, so I don't know if she'll be on board sooner than that, but we're tentatively saying a month from now, from tomorrow.
Fantastic. She really gave us a lot of confidence in her presentation.
This is the supervisor of Humanities?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, because it doesn't say that, it just says Curriculum Instruction.
Well, the Department of Education classification for the role is supervisor of Curriculum Instruction. We internally call it the Humanities Curriculum Instruction Supervisor.
Excellent. All right, any other discussion or comments about the personnel items? All right, we will now move on. Let me see if I can get this correct. To policies, and Mark is not here, and we did not discuss who would present this. I can...
I can say a few words if you have...
Oh, please.
There weren't any major changes. This is also our second reading, so members of the community who have questions about the changes can go back to the first review, which was in August. Items A, B, and C are mostly just some legalese we had to enter into the language, so very minor changes. No major changes to letter D and E, unlike some districts in South Jersey. We are not just going to give kids cheese sandwiches, or what it was, tuna sandwiches, something like that.
Yeah, where it was, yep.
We codified our procedure if kids do not have the money, the wherewithal, or if they're behind in their payments. We have a system in place, we're not going to let them go hungry. In fact, I understand the latest is this district is not going to let kids go to the prom or graduate. That's not what we're doing yet. Give it a read.
Yeah, right. Okay.
But we have an internal mechanism, but a lot of it has to do with identifying kids who may be in arrears, or families that may be in arrears, and seeing if they need support. Perhaps a social worker needs to step in. We have a whole hierarchy of people who are going to start from the base level all the way up to the superintendent level if something, if the interventions do not help.
We had a really robust discussion about this. Was it last year or two years ago? I don't remember, but...
We started a couple of years ago, and then we continued in this past year.
So, this particular change is not substantive? I don't remember what the change is on E. I don't remember what the change...
I can pull it up.
Yeah, and I don't think there are any changes since we adopted it for first reading.
Actually, I think, I felt like this one was a little bit clearer, that communication would be directly with the parents, and that the student is not to be like, hey, you're behind. So, I thought this was actually a step up from that.
Oh, right. I don't think, between first and second reading, we've changed it. But yes, yes, I do think it was clearer. Yeah, I think we added some language to that effect.
Actually, here, I'll just read one passage that we added.
Perfect, thank you.
All communications concerning arrears should be between the district and the student's parents, not between the district and the student. So, students are going to be pulled aside, say, hey, where's the $5 your family owes me? Additionally, the district will take no punitive measures against the student, such as prohibiting the student from graduating, based on their arrears, but may, at its discretion, take legal action against the student's parents if it comes to a point at which there's a neglect issue of some kind, or something that we find after investigating is not right.
We reserve the right to go to court if there really is a situation where a family just isn't paying because they don't want to, but that would not come until we had investigated the situation, determined whether that family was actually eligible for free and reduced lunch, et cetera, and it would not involve any kind of punitive contact with the child. All right. So, there are no changes to that policy since we talked about this at our last meeting.
Except for that inclusion of the language, no.
Yeah, but, and I think that we already adopted that language on first reading, I believe, no?
Yes, I'm sorry. Correct. This is the second reading, it'll be official.
Yeah, this is our adoption reading. Okay.
So, I'm sorry, just to be clear, there were no changes between the last reading, correct?
That's correct. First and second reading, no changes.
Okay.
But Rob is correct about the changes from our old policy.
Yep.
That we included that specific language about talking with the parents, not the students, and not taking punitive action against students because of arrears.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion about policies? All right, Monique, I'm not going to forget you this time. Did you have a report for us? I just can't do it. It's impossible for me.
So, we are going to meet in October, so I can report that we are making progress on our meeting with law enforcement to review the memorandum of agreement, finally. So, we're hoping to meet with them towards the end of the month, and then after that meeting, we will reconvene and move forward. So, we will be meeting with our new captain, Corbello, Detective Omero, is that his title? Or Officer Omero, who is the new youth detective here, and Chief Abrams. And we, I think we're going to have a very productive and cooperative kind of review of the memorandum of agreement, and let's, fingers crossed, we can get it approved, our addendum items.
All 75 pages plus the addendum items.
Plus addendum items, yes.
Thank you for pursuing.
I'll just add, our next meeting is next Thursday.
Do you have it for us? Okay, so we're set for next Thursday. Great.
It's our hope, I speak for Darcy, the board president, it's our hope that we're going to be able to work with the police department to make a presentation to the board, potentially in November, to talk about how we're collaboratively going to work with behaviorally troubled students who might be outside of school also getting into some trouble. So, we hope to make a presentation by November about that.
So, just to be clear, there has been no discussions necessarily about this formally?
Correct.
This is something, okay.
Yeah, we're just in the total initial planning stages.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments, concerns, questions about the Equity and Excellence Committee items? Report? Nope. Okay. So, if I am correct, this is the point at which we return to public comment before we vote on our committee action items. So, I'm going to again read to you, "The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. This will be our final public comment session of the evening. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings." At this point, I see no need to limit the time. You know, if it gets to be 11 o'clock and we still have 100 people left, then we'll think about it. But for now, we welcome your comments. Please go ahead on whatever topic is of concern to you.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me? Okay, that's...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Hi, so my name's Leora. I'm a student at the high school, and I came to my attention recently that the middle school music programs have been changed, their class time has been changed to 20 minutes, I believe every other day, it might be every day. But I'm just kind of here to express my opinion about that, because I think it's a bad idea, because, I mean, the high school really emphasizes how proud we are of our mall UN club, DECA, the sports, and all of the other extracurriculars that we have. And in order to have a strong choir, and have, specifically choir, because I'm in choir, but in order to have a strong choir, we need a strong feeder program so that we can have kids come in as freshmen and be able to sight-read and to sing, and to have an idea of where their voice part is, so that we can then go on and go to festivals like ACDA and the World Strides Festival in Washington, DC, which we're hopefully going to this year, and continue to win awards and represent our school in a good light. And limiting the music classes to this short amount of time, it doesn't, hold on, let me look. It negatively affects the students, and they then can't really learn effectively how to sing. And in choir, there aren't any instruments, but Ms. Chambers still can't teach without, because it has moved to the cafeteria, because they're only 20 minutes, and it's hard to get all the way to the high school. There's no piano in here, there's no solfège chart, there's no sight-reading books, the choir binders where we keep all of our music in, any extra copies of music for new students. It can all be transported here. It's important to have the, to have those classes in the rooms that they're set up for and equipped for. And also, and that's just the choir, the orchestra and the band have also been affected by this, and it takes like 20 minutes to set up instruments. They have to tune the instruments, they have to, the band has to assemble their instruments. You can't play half of a flute. But it takes a little bit for them to create these, to assemble their instruments, tune their instruments, make sure that everything's working properly, warm up, and start playing. And by that time, the period's almost over. Yep, that's it. And, yeah, and also, middle school kids are still learning how to enjoy music and how to play music, how to read music, just the basic foundations. And they learn a little bit in Bartle, but the middle school is when they come and they learn how to get better at these instruments, and how to really, like, play them well, and how to play, not just the technicalities of it, but the musicality of it, and to make it sound really nice, and to explore their range, and to maybe try out different instruments, see if maybe they enjoy that one better. And it's really important that they have enough time to do that, and enough time to learn these songs and pieces that we perform at our concerts, because it's really a ton of fun to have these musical, excuse me, groups. And I know that I personally look forward to going to choir every morning, because I get to wake up and make music, rather than stare and sit at a, sit and stare at the board first thing in the morning. And I enjoy singing with the rest of the choir. It's an awesome, amazing, fun group. But if the choir experience, or the band, or the orchestra experience is already unpleasant in middle school, people aren't going to start something new in high school. They might be like, oh, I'll try this, but they're a lot likely to listen to their friends, be like, hey, you should come and join choir, or band, or orchestra with me, because it's a lot of fun. And it's especially hard to get people to come join, because it's so early in the morning. And that's most of my points. But yeah, there should be, like, solid, a solid music program in the middle school, so that the high school can also have a solid music program, can continue to support the arts, and to establish a fundamental program, because the orchestra and band aren't just the orchestra and band, they also feed into the pit for the musical, the spring musical. It's really awesome, it's a lot of fun, but it's really hard to put it on if the band can't all practice together, because we have to hire musicians, because we don't have anyone to play that instrument. And, yeah, it's important, because I love choir, and I love the music, but it's already, especially the orchestra, is already fairly small, and having a small middle school, like, orchestra, having a small middle school orchestra is not going to help the size of, or the skill level of the high school orchestra. I was also talking with one of my middle school friends, eighth grade, and just saying, yeah, these, like, the sixth graders don't really know what they're doing, and without all this time to set up and teach them, we can't really create fun music. It's more just kind of setting up, and then the bell rings, and we all have to hurry to pack up. And yeah, keep the middle school program or, and music programs, because they're important, and they're fun. Yeah, that's my piece. I need to sign in.
Thank you so much. Oh, yeah, we, the student reps and I talked about their being free to leave at any time, and they were going to just sort of give a signal, and hopefully I haven't missed your signal, like, I need to leave. You're welcome to stay, but please leave anytime.
If, no pressure, I know it's your first night, but if at some point, and you probably have homework to do, you're seniors, you're applying for college, if you can step out, we won't be offended, okay?
You should have homework. Scott, did you want to, is the music program schedule still being developed?
No. But I am still having Mrs. O and Ms. Brady try to look at a way to extend that time. I, I'm very apologetic for how this went down. It's not, not the way I hoped it would, and as somebody who was raised by a jazz musician, I'm hearing it from all angles. My daughter is a musical theater major in that school of music, so it's very disconcerting, and I understand everything that was just presented to me. I was, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't have any clear answers right now, but I can tell you, it is something I think about very frequently, and I'm hoping to have some resolution to at some point soon.
Wonderful. That's what I was wondering, if there's still a different resolution in the offing, potentially. Maybe. No commitment, but maybe. All right, let's see if we can do something, Scott. We're hearing this from everywhere in the community, and, you know, my children are not, music is not their thing, but they'd be very disappointed if it were. I know you're working hard on it, so whatever you can do. Okay, so thank you for your comments. I don't see you now. Yes, next up.
My name is Lindsay Stoll, and I'm an eighth grader at Highland Park Middle School. I came to talk about the music department and how it's being shortchanged by the new schedule.
Wonderful, thank you.
The new schedule has band orchestra and/or chorus in drastically shortened periods instead of the 40 to 45-minute periods. This may not seem like a big issue until you consider the amount of time it takes to prepare for a class like this. I speak mainly in relation to the band, as I'm a part of it, but in band, it takes five to 10 minutes to set up our instruments, prepare our music, and get ready to play. It also takes five minutes to put everything away. This means in a 20-minute period, we may only get five minutes to actually practice music. The band has three to four events we play at, the winter and spring concerts, Dorney Park trip, and the performance during Black History Month. These are all major parts of our experience, as they, as they are the time that we can show our friends and families how far we've come and how much work we've put into our performances. With 20-minute periods, we won't be able to complete the necessary practice to prepare ourselves. Preparing for performances is incredibly difficult for all people involved. Mr. Coleman, Mr. Chambers, Mr. Marthenio, and the students put a lot of hard work into the performances, and are able to. In band, it can take anywhere from one to four weeks, depending on the difficulty of a song, to actually master and be able to play it well. This, and this is in 40 to 45-minute periods. In the short hour periods, it may take twice as long, and this is only per song, which we have three to four of per concert. With such short periods and such frequent performances, we won't be able to perform as well, or nearly as many songs as we had in the full periods. As well, there are now pull-outs during any class period, which means we may miss important or core classes that we didn't have to in the past. My perception is that the music isn't as important to the district's leadership as it should have been, and that the high school, the students get to go to school later if they don't take an extracurricular such as a music class. This could discourage them to take it, and many of them will choose to quit band orchestra or chorus when they go to high school. My perception is that the, sorry, music is much more important than an extracurricular activity. It has been shown that music helps to develop good study habits through repetition, concentration, and attention span, math skills, and group cooperation. Study of music also improves visual and verbal learning skills, vocabulary, and perception. The Humanist recently showed results from a 10-year study that tracked 25,000 middle and high school students. The students who participated in music class received higher scores in standardized tests than those who had little to no musical involvement. If this doesn't represent how important the music department is in schools, I'm not sure what will. But most importantly, us students love the electives we take part in. We take pride in the music classes we're in. To take that away from the students who enjoy it so much would do our school a misjustice. Overall, the school may not have been perfect, but taking away from the music department to improve a schedule that wasn't flawed in the first place only hurts the school and students more. Thank you.
So, if I could just interject, Scott, rather than the tepid response I gave the last time, like, maybe we should try to, could you maybe give us a report at the next meeting, like, what's going on? It does sound to me, as a former clarinet player, 20-minute periods are impossible.
A quick, a quick...
I know that there's, go ahead, sorry. There's some financial issues that led to changing the schedule, but there must be something.
So, a quick overview of how this got to this place. When our budget was being balanced, we had to cut a number of what we refer to as sixth-period compensations. The money, additional money we give to teachers to teach beyond the contractual five periods. By doing that, it meant we had to cut the elective period at the middle school. So, Mrs. O, Ms. Brady consolidated what was a nine-period middle school schedule into eight periods, which removed that period during which we met, had music meet, every other day for whatever the class period is, about 42 minutes. So, to try to recoup from that, they, and knowing that we didn't want to eliminate music completely, they found a way to squeeze in the 20 minutes. So, that's how we got to where we are. I'm not suggesting it's, it's the right thing, but I have to, I have to tell you, a significant part of why we're here has to do with our budget.
And I know you guys know where that budget comes from. We are limited in the amount that we can tax our residents and the amount that we want to tax our residents. Nonetheless, we probably would tax more if we were allowed to, just because we need a music program. So we are, we're in a very difficult position. I, I know you're already looking for ways to get, to, to deal with this. I hope we can find something better than 20 minute music periods because obviously.
I do too. And perhaps at the very least, if I can't come to the board next meeting, which is October 7th, and say definitively, we fixed this problem. We're still at 20 minutes. We need to look at the budget going forward in 2021, 2021, and maybe we need to reprioritize where some of our funding is going and put it back into restoring that period. And then find other, where's places cut.
I'm sorry to, sorry to interrupt, but you know, when we were doing, when we were deliberating about the budget and talking about cutting back the sixth period and there, there was a sizable savings there, but I'm not sure that we were going through line by line as we probably should have and known exactly what program would be, would have been cut in this way. I don't think that we knew specifically, for example, that this music program would be eliminated or down to 20 minutes because of it had, I don't think that we would have gone for that.
So from what I understand though, we couldn't have known that ahead of time because the administration at the middle school was given the task of doing the cutting and that wasn't given to us for permission.
Which is why we didn't see that. Okay.
Right.
So I think we're all supportive of reinstating or restoring a reasonable period of time for music class in the middle school.
So we'll talk about that next time. Thank you very much, Scott.
Hello. Hello, I'm Rob Scott. I'm a parent of two children now in the high school and one in the middle school and I'm here to speak about curriculum, specifically the music programs at the middle school and high school, the arts and humanities, particularly at the high school, but also secondarily at the middle school, and the world language programs. And I have spent many hours now going deeply, deeply down the rabbit hole. I have made requests of Mr. Lassiter, which were deemed out of the ordinary and were resisted. And basically I got to look at what the complete high school schedule was and got a sense of what it would be like if say the curriculum committee and the finance committee ever had gotten the line by line information. So I actually did write out some comments here. If my phone will work. So my general concern is the curriculum and many events suggest that the administration, and by this I don't mean the board or the curriculum committee, but I mean the superintendent, the principals at the schools are for some reason tilting the priorities of the school away from the arts and humanities and towards STEM and other initiatives and kind of emphasizing current cultural myths about the future job prospects and salaries of different fields. And individually, all the decisions seem kind of justifiable, but collectively they pertain to a picture of a kind of a particular agenda at the schools. It's one in which the arts and humanities are left short and anything that's technology or engineering or business, all of the majors that we have too many of at Rutgers, because not everyone is going to do this, are given kind of a boost. And so some of the things that have happened include, the middle school electives were all cut, that included creative writing. They were ended, okay? This is, we're told for budgetary reasons. Okay, budget, I understand. No ELA, English Language Arts electives are offered at the high school this year and there's a very, very good reason to believe this is not a temporary state of affairs. The middle school and high school arts program, this is the arts program where students can go to Middlesex County College and take the arts, which has been a transformative experience for my daughter, was cut. We found out it had apparently been cut in 2017. It did get restored. I'm here partly, I want to be on like the TV on the thing, right? So it's recorded, warning everyone, don't cut it, okay? Because I think it's kind of probably on the chopping block because it was already cut in 2017 and no one was told about it and then it's kind of been restored. So all of these things are going on and each of them individually, it's like, oh, there was a scheduling thing. Oh, well, there's not high student demand for that. Oh, well, it's a budget thing. Okay, individually. But here's the thing, okay? It's all politics. When we decide that something's really important, right? We find a way to do it, okay? So I know the Chromebook initiative was really controversial, right? But hey, it's 2019. People need their computers, right? We need them in the school. We found the money to do that. But the concern is, is that this is coming at the expense of things that are very important to many students. So I'm concerned about what's happened specifically with the middle school music program with band and orchestra. These programs seem to be set up to be on a trajectory towards decline. The creation of the 20-minute periods, I mean, it's kind of with all due respect, there was the whole summer to work on this, right? This was not a rock and science scheduling thing, okay? So my relationship with music is I, I hated choir. I'm, can't really sing. The idea of learning an instrument is horrifying to me personally. I have been amazed at the miracle of my children learning to play their instruments coming up through bartle, right? But even I know that 20 minutes is not enough time if you're going to set up, you know, a flute or a clarinet or something like that. So I think Ms. O, the folks doing the, the big scheduling should have known that this was coming down the pike and that 20-minute periods are not acceptable. And in fact, if we get into the weeds with it, which I did, it's really, really complicated. So it's not just 20 minutes periods. And it's really like, the middle school's not really going to just have A and B periods anymore. There's going to be a kind of weird C period where they take the 20 minutes and they steal 23 minutes from another thing to create a 43-minute period and there will also be pullouts from a day school, oh, and we're bringing back early morning band. So the whole thing of like, hey, the kids need to sleep is kind of out the window. So what it feels like is that the 20-minute periods are just a polite fiction, a way for us to pretend the band, orchestra and choir instruction is happening during a 20-minute period, but in reality, it's happening before school or after school in the case of choir or during pullouts. And that is, I mean, if that's the only time to do it, that's fine, but this is a case when we have to be honest about it. I'm sorry, I have more. Third curricular point, it's about the languages, okay? And I know this is maybe going to be a sore subject, but I'm not giving up on the French program. Because the school still employs a good high school French teacher who teaches AP French. She's still employed, there's no indication that she's going anywhere. She's teaching five sections of French right now. The decision-making process that ended middle school French is exactly the same chain of events that is going to be used to get rid of creative writing and I'll get to that in a minute because like I have the receipts now. We can have a Mandarin program in the high school. We can have a French program in the high school and we can have a very robust Spanish program. I know we heard there was overcrowding in Spanish. Yeah, there really is overcrowding in Spanish and that's because we haven't yet replaced a Spanish teacher, right? Now I really hope we do. I wonder where the money has gone for that Spanish teacher line, like what's it being used for? I know some sixth periods are being taught, but we are teaching fewer sections of Spanish than we taught last year. So there were 218 students in middle school Spanish last year, there's 231 this year and depending upon how many extra sections Ms. G has been given, it's eight or nine sections of Spanish taught this year in the middle school and there were 10 last year, okay? So we can do that with French and I'm going to ask the curriculum committee to deliberate on it. I'm going to ask them to make a recommendation and I'm going to ask that the community be solicited for their input and it not be a survey where Mandarin's at the top and French is at the bottom and the sausage gets made. So basically I recognize I'm being kind of a pain in the ass here and I'm kind of being a pain in the ass to nice people and people who are my friends at some level and I'm pretty sure Mr. Lassiter is just sick of me at this point. And I kind of get like how hard it is, like, like it's really hard, okay? This is a hard job, there's not enough money and I also recognize there are state laws, some of them really, really stupid about what we have to teach, okay, that impose a lot of constraints. But what I feel like is, I mean, I grew up in Montana and now I've moved to like a liberal town in the East Coast and damn it, if I'm going to live in a bleeding heart liberal town, I want my kids to have a bleeding heart liberal curriculum, okay? So one of the main reasons provided, okay, where am I? So creative writing. So the high school puts out a course planning guide, okay? And now that my eldest is in the 11th grade, I have some experience with the course planning guide and started to notice something that like, things that are in the course, course planning guide, they're like hard to take. And I started to wonder like, do these things actually exist? Are they ever taught, right? I've had many conversations with my son about taking probability and statistics. Well, I've recently learned that's never been taught. It's not going to be taught unless something changes radically about, you know, what student preferences are or what counselors tell students, okay? I'm then also told, well, courses run if students request them. And then I do like sort of deep ethnographic research with my children and with their friends and I find out about the process by which courses are correct, requested. So my daughter wanted creative writing, but she was told creative writing is not available to ninth graders, so she never requested it. She requested other things. My son heard about, well, I heard about printmaking. We talked about it. He thought that would be cool. He requested printmaking. Except when he requested printmaking, he was told by the counselor, well, you're eligible to take that, but we can't fit you into that. So the request was never recorded. So when I asked Mr. Lassiter, how many requests were there for some of these courses that are not running? When it came to printmaking, the answer was zero. Just weird coincidence that I happen to know and have had like several conversations with, yeah, no, I requested it from the counselor. I don't know, maybe he's lying. But the sense is very clearly, students go in, they see the counselor and they're told certain things and there is no systematic process whereby student requests are recorded. So if I'm going to speak to a political body, I'm going to make a specific request. I would like for the policy committee, if it's the policy committee, or the curriculum committee, if it's the curriculum committee, to come up with a proposal to create a transparent system where systematically, when the students fill out their course requests, they're entered into a system without the counselor being involved, just what courses do you want to take and that that data is recorded. So that we know, and then there's a formal report to the curriculum committee, these are the courses that were, was, were requested. So that if we're in the situation where there's some line by line about six periods, the curriculum committee is equipped with the data to say something intelligent about it. So that's one reason we're told courses are not offered. The next reason is it's a scheduling thing or a teacher availability thing. And I think this is really important because this is how French was killed in the middle school, okay? The story was, there is no possibility of finding a middle school French teacher, okay? Now, there's another story, which I have a very good authority of, there was actually somebody who was found and there was a telephone call made to them while they're like at their current school's like graduation ceremony and then there was never any follow-up after that, okay? I believe that a French teacher probably could have been found, okay? But the answer is, we can't do French in the middle school because there's no French teacher. So what recently happened in the high school? There was a teacher who was certified for English and psychology, okay, which made available some extra English slots that could be used to allow an English teacher to offer, say, creative writing or language of film or African-American literature or journalism, all of these awesome courses that my high school did not have and I was so excited that my kids might have the opportunity to take them, okay? So some of those, there would have been, somebody'd offer, but the teacher resigned. So I understand that administrators must administer and so a teacher was then moved from the middle school, who was social studies and psychology certified, to the high school, okay? And then another teacher from the middle school was moved into his slot and then another onsite teacher at the middle school was moved into the vacated sixth grade slot, okay? And then a new teacher was hired in the district, but was not assigned to either bartle and Irving, okay? So the line, the money that paid for creative writing, which is a priority for me, right? And I think a priority for many people in our community, is at another place in the district. And we are now in a situation where in the high school, that English energy is not available. Now, what's being done in the high school? Well, Mr. Lassiter took advantage of the opportunity to schedule 12 sections of personal finance at the school. Now, personal finance, why? This is a state mandated course. It's always been a requirement. Alec, which is that awful corporate lobbying organization, has gotten this requirement passed all over the place. New Jersey was one of the model places that jumped on it right away and so all the students have to take personal finance, okay? I have faith that when they're taught personal finance, they're not being told that bankruptcy is their fault and I hope they're being taught some reasonable things, but it can be a very sort of dark thing. It's being used as some kind of college planning tool now. I know students do a project where they imagine what they're going to be when they grow up and that's all fine. And it's fine if we want all the freshmen to take it and that's why we're offering 12 sections, I'm told. This way, all the freshmen can take it and everyone else who hasn't taken it before and we're going to get on this pattern where all the freshmen take personal finance. So the question is, what happens next year? And I asked Mr. Lassiter, well, next year, everyone's taking personal finance, so you'll only need to offer six sections, right? Oh, no, 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 we're still in transition. It'll be more than six sections. So we're in a situation where it seems to me like the French story is repeating itself and we are once again allowing administrators to kind of make a decision about the kinds of things that are going to be offered and what we will have in the ensuing years is maybe we will offer more personal finance, maybe we will offer some of the other social studies electives, but there will be no energy, no money, no ability to offer creative writing or African-American literature or, or any of these courses, which I think would be good opportunities for our students. I know I've gone on for a long time.
And we just want to make sure that not everybody gets a chance to speak. Some, some people haven't spoken yet.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I know you know that. Some of this is too in the weeds for board members to respond to individually, like.
Right, so, so this is the, but this is, this is the problem, is the weeds, okay? And this is my great frustration, okay? I have a complaint, I have an issue and I'm told it can't be that way because of the weeds. So I have now gotten deeply, deeply into the weeds and I understand some of the weeds.
We appreciate you doing that, by the way.
And at the end of the day, the solution is political. The solution is to have transparent communication, to record some things, to give the curriculum committee the tools to make recommendations and for us to have the courage to say, hey, we're going to, we're going to, no matter what next year, I mean, I'd like to hear this, no matter what next year, we're going to pay a sixth period and we're going to be able to offer at least one English Language Arts elective. And with that, thank you all for being patient and I will shut up.
Thank you, Rob, thank you. Can I, I don't want to respond to, oh.
Yeah, I mean, since I'm the head of the curriculum committee, I just wanted to thank you, Rob Scott, for your very well researched comments. And I really think that your specific comment is something that we can discuss at our next meeting. But I do want to say that as far as our committee goes, we cannot administer the district, we cannot administer the administrators. So we do have a lot of, you know, good faith agreements that we come to when it comes to how things will be run, cut, you know, because of budgetary issues and such, but I think that transparency is what I'm coming away from with your comments and thank you for that.
I am, I wanted to point out too that we, I heard three specific things that we can do, maybe two specific things. First of all. First of all, the transparent system to record student requests. I think that that's important. We have no idea how many students wanted to take creative writing, or how many students, like, you know, my child, wanted to take computer science and, you know, instead are taking personal finance. Very, we have a great teacher for personal finance. So that is like a, you know, thank God. Because the course is what it sounds like, I'm sure. I'm sure he's doing his best with it.
It's a wonderful course, according to my high school graduate.
Oh, good. Oh, oh, then I, I'm sorry, I spoke poorly of it.
Yeah, no, no, not at all. But I mean, it could be an absolute nightmare.
I was picturing a state requirement that-
No, it's a state requirement that could be a nightmare. But it is taught by someone who is very thorough in advising the students about what it truly means to be managing your money.
Wonderful, that's fantastic, okay. So the preferences we wanna do, we wanna record student preferences. And also what I think what Rob brought up about, you know, at a certain point, we made decisions about, you know, how much money was gonna be allocated here, there, and everywhere. And then over the summer, it turned out that the consequences of some of those decisions were not foreseeable to us. And that needs, hey, Scott, that needs to change, I believe. We should talk about this with Mark, who'll be here at our next meeting. But clearly, this is not great that, you know, we said, okay, allocate this money to this department, and then, oh, it turns out the result of your allocation was music is like really on the brink. Or electives are really narrow. So we need to figure out something. And I know Mark will be open to figuring that out. So I'm glad we figured out some of what happened here and how the board might be able to be more involved next year. And I don't know what we can say about changes for this year. But you got anything on that? No comment, okay, okay. I mean, as you, oh, yes, please.
And that's got you off, but just to add to that, that also extends to the curriculum committee as well. And I think, Michelle, you spoke to it, just knowing more of the weeds sort of behind this possible decisions that are going to be made as a result of decisions we make in the committee. It's really hard for us to-
Right.
-go in and make decisions and then have, in hindsight, have to look at sort of what the consequences are administratively. And I understand administrative decisions will come after, but maybe we need to have some process where we're getting briefed more often in detail with these decisions.
I think it would help.
Because board-level priorities about, we like music, we like art. Those need to be honored in the execution.
Yeah, in some way, there has to be-
Look, I think it's very clear that we have several parents in the community who are concerned about the way we've been scheduling our classes. Best thing, I think, right at this very moment, I think I need to, what I can do is get these folks involved in actually helping us develop the schedule. I mean, Dr. Scott, you did a lot of research. Sounds like you are just as adept at doing a schedule potentially as Mr. Lassiter, on some level, on some level.
I mean, I-
I think we need to engage you. I'm gonna miss you and hire you.
I have to disagree.
Rob would do it for free.
I have to disagree. I'm not, I'm not, it's not a personal issue. I have to disagree. We all have jobs, and we have other responsibilities. And I have gone to, I don't know how many meetings just this week, where I'm out of the house until like 9 o'clock. So I, I don't think that, I don't think we need another task force, or another committee, or another meeting, or to bring more parents in. I don't think that that's what's required. I think that we are entrusting the schedule changes and all of that, you know, because we respect the authority of the administrators. So then, you know, we get involved, and then we're told that we're getting too involved, and that we're overstepping, and it's, I mean, Monique, I think that both of us are kind of feeling the same frustration. Like, we are trying to put things on the table and prioritize, and we cannot be more involved. It's not physically possible with the calendar as it works, like in here. It's just, we cannot be more involved. And I know that Mr. Scott cannot be more involved. I mean, I-
Well, the other thing is, if you look at this board, it's a pretty artsy board. So I think that to see, for us to be seeing some reduction in the offerings in the arts really bothers a lot of us, so, you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, what you said about STEM replacing the arts, that's not something that we're wanting to see.
So there are two things. It is all seriousness. I have told the committee, the curriculum committee, as recently as I think Monday when we met, that I would like to have Mr. Lassiter, Monsieur Semier, who already have parent committees intact, to increase the scope of those committees, to involve people like you, Dr. Scott, on a, I know you have concerns about the French program, others, maybe even students, to at least advise the principals on how they might be able to be wary of the pitfalls that they might be getting into. Michelle, I really appreciate your delineation of the role of the board and the administration. But I, I mean, I think, you know me by now, I like to engage stakeholders, and I'd like to make sure that my principals do the same. Maybe we need to engage more stakeholders. The other thing I'd like to do with the curriculum committee, I wrote myself a note. If Dr. Scott's perception, and perhaps it's other members of the community's perception, is that we're leaning to STEM and forsaking humanities, I'd like to do an audit of all the courses and programs, some kind of a, I don't know what that would look like yet, and present that to the curriculum committee so we can see what we're really talking about.
That's fair. Yeah, because there's a lot that was put out there that would be helpful for us to get some hard data on.
And one aspect of that same sort of audit that I would like to see is that when the students are handed their course guide, it's not just a course guide, but also some sort of direction as to when those courses are actually offered. So like if there's some courses that are only offered in the spring, or only offered in the fall, they're aware of those restrictions as they start, you know, at-
I agree. I think there is a, you know, I had a chat with Mr. Lassiter after Dr. Scott, he and I shared some email threads. In one of the threads, Dr. Scott expressed frustration that the program of study, it seems misleading that we offer all these courses, yet we don't actually offer them. Mr. Lassiter pointed out that there is a little line somewhere in the guide, obviously not emphasized well enough, that states that not all of these courses will be offered. So, but maybe what we ought to do is have two separate sections, two separate guides. One of, one that shows exactly what we're gonna offer in any given school year, and another that presents, I don't know, a menu of options that we're considering.
Yeah, I think it's very clear in the guide, like if you're looking at, you know, if you start here in math, this is where you'll end up. If you start here in social studies, this is your, this is where you could end up. But there's nothing very clear for any of the electives necessarily. As like if you are interested in art, and you take this, this year, this, you know, like a suggestive course or plan of study, if your interest is outside of some of those STEM fields. So I think there's some definite areas that we can improve in, you know, the course guide and the planning process for students. I mean, we've talked about it for a number of years here and there about, you know, the middle school students coming in and not knowing exactly what classes to take and when to take them. And I think there's been some improvement there. But the high school's still sort of where we had it a few years ago.
Okay.
A lot to chew on. I think we have some definite proposals for things we can do differently, and I like the audit.
Yeah, and can I add just one more thing? Another point that was raised was about the middle school arts program. I'm sorry, Middlesex County, right? Arts program, something you're talking about for middle school students. And can you just give the official sort of where we're at with that? That it's-
Which particular arts program?
The middle school county-wide program.
Oh, we reinstated that program.
It is definitely reinstated.
Correct, it is. We notified parents of such as well, over the summer.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Dr. Scott was just fearful that that was going to be discontinued again.
Yes.
Correct?
With good reason, yeah.
Yes, I was personally upset by that.
We're struggling here.
All right.
And then lastly, I just wanted to tie in, I know this is late, and I, but I do wanna tie in this theme, I think, that I'm seeing in terms of, again, the board's role and what we know, when we know it, to the other issue that brought a lot of people out tonight. And that, of course, is the Bartle bathroom issue, and how we got here to this point. It wasn't about the board deciding that, oh, you gotta take that sign off the door. The board, we didn't even know what was happening at all until Facebook posts started showing up. And so I think we really need to, as a board, we all want the same thing. We wanna serve the children well. We want to make sure that we are the best stewards for everyone in this community, our school community. But to be able to do that in good faith and diligence and with the HP way, right? We have to really look internally at the processes we have for the board, knowing what's happening and big decisions being made that are gonna affect either school community or district community. And I just wanna put out there that we have to get much better at that. That needs to be an open conversation that we have so that we don't continue to find ourselves in this position time and time again, where, you know, again, decisions are being made. And I understand why decisions are made. But again, we, we are finding ourselves with our backs against the wall without really having the kind of input that I think we should have in important matters. Without overstepping and overseeing or administering, as Michelle said.
Right. Yeah, so maybe we should set aside time at a coming up, a meeting coming up, or at least, you know, you and Darcy perhaps working together to set up some new structures for board administration communication. Because there's been a lot-
Right, sorry.
There's been a lot to start the school year. There's been middle school stuff that we were surprised to see on Facebook. There's been high school stuff we were surprised to see on Facebook. There was, you know, a whole bathroom issue, we were, you know, and-
And Irving, don't you?
Oh, there was an Irving issue that-
I think that the Irving play-based learning is something that we're still struggling with.
Yes.
Parents are upset about the schedule.
Yeah, and I guess that's-
Yes, sorry, yes.
That stuff will happen. But just as you just gave a delineation of timeline of events for another issue, did we get that on the issue with the Bartle bathrooms? I don't think so.
Just a second, I'll ask you what you're saying. I'm sorry, what's the gesturing?
I'm sorry, this is- Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We will stop, yeah.
Sorry, we-
That's it.
We'll stop, yep. I mean, it was a serious comment that Rob made, and we do need to deal with that, and it's, you know, and it affects the other issue as well. Yeah, we're sorry, we didn't mean to be rude. Apologies.
Hi, everybody.
Hi again.
My name is Chris Nelson. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I'm a Highland Park parent and a very sleepy member of Gender Equity HP. I wanna start off by saying thanks for taking the wind out of my sails because I expected kind of like a fight about this. And as much as I like a good fight, it's really wonderful to be preaching to the choir here. So thank you all for that. Okay, and go back to the prepared statement. We're gonna return to point number four. All-gender multi-stall restrooms are consistent with Highland Park's commitment to inclusion and status as an innovative leader on gender inclusivity. First, we would like to present a bit more of the research on how a lack of inclusivity impacts LGBTQ-plus students at school specifically. LGBTQ students, particularly transgender kids, are currently experiencing violence, discrimination, and significant mental health crises throughout our country, including here in New Jersey. This is something that many in the room have heard before. What I would like to do is share some numbers that reflect how it's manifesting here in our own state. These numbers are from the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network, commonly referred to as GLSEN, a national organization that works to ensure positive school climate and safety for all students. According to GLSEN, here in New Jersey in 2017, nearly half of transgender students were unable to use a restroom aligned with their gender. In addition, 80% of LGBTQ-plus students in New Jersey reported hearing negative remarks about gender expression regularly. And almost 70% reported negative remarks about transgender people. 56% of LGBTQ-plus students reported verbal harassment due to gender expression. 20% reported being physically harassed, and 9% reported physical assault. Non-binary students of all gender diverse students experience the highest levels of bullying, harassment, and are at the greatest risk. They're nearly always misgendered when they request gender-neutral pronouns. And studies have linked this misgendered students to higher suicide rates. For some non-binary children, single-stall bathrooms are an appropriate or even preferred alternative. But for many, they simply draw attention to these students at best, and at worst, expose them to violence and harassment. They also send the message that they're not part of the mainstream student community. Sadly, the impact of these statistics is even more grim. Symptoms of depression and anxiety among young transgender children as young as age five are often common, including suicidal ideations. As children grow older, symptoms become even more amplified. In 2016, the National Center for Transgender Equality found that 40% of transgender adults reported having made a suicide attempt. And that 92% of these individuals reported attempting suicide another time before age 25. We all agree that every student should see a positive reflection of themselves in their schools. For transgender students, this is often not the case. But last week, Bartle Elementary School offered an example of inclusivity and affirmation with the rollout of the unisex multi-stall bathroom options. This was specifically critical for non-binary students as there's no other truly inclusive alternative that fully protects privacy and ensures safety. The decision to close these bathrooms, as you all know, had devastating effects on local children, all of whom inspired the support you see here today. With Highland Park's reputation for leading the way when it comes to trans-affirmative education, we're in a position to center on the needs of vulnerable students right now. We can and must fix this mistake and immediately replace the all-gender bathroom signs and restore at least one unisex multi-stall option in Bartle Elementary for the health and well-being of our students and our community. I respectfully call for the district to restore multi-stall all-gender bathrooms at Bartle. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, Gilad Goldberg. I live in Highland Park. My kids attend Bartle Elementary School. I sent you a letter a week ago. I had a speech prepared, but my brilliant friends ruined it for me with covering the issues in such a brilliant way. So I wrote here now another one about why we choose to live in Highland Park. We moved to the United States from Israel three years ago. We had the means, we had the documentations, we have the set of skills to choose to live wherever we want in the United States of America, especially here around New York. We chose Highland Park. As gay parents, we have chosen to live in Highland Park due to its reputation as a liberal, open-minded town, nothing else. No offense, but we have seen nicer towns in New Jersey. We have met more smiley cashiers on stop-and-shop branches outside of Highland Park. Later on, we've made friends here. Some became close friends, some we actually called family now. We are deeply invested in our friends and family here in this community. Nevertheless, the revoke of policy, of this policy shook us to our bones. It took us back to our heartbreaking experiences as gay kids in Israel in the 70s and 80s. Things we will not let our kids experience, even if it means to leave Highland Park, to move out of here. to move out of here. We started questioning the way we see the town we call home. People come here, invest money here, build this town because of our reputation as an open-minded society, like the Baker and the Carpenter, which is the source of my emotional stability. Or Oak View, a place I like not to like the coffee on a daily basis. Your decisions here tonight or in the next few days will influence not only our kids, but also how this town will look in 10 or 20 years. What kind of people will move here? How many Rodgers and Lumineys will stay? How many young families will return to live here from Manhattan or Brooklyn? My sister used to live here many years ago because of the Jewish observant community, also considered to be open-minded. I want the same to continue to be the case for people looking for an inclusive society. So it's not only about the toilets, it's not only about our lovely kids, it's about the essence of the identity of this town that everyone here and the people that signed and others that couldn't sign the petition that will be, that will be represented to you are looking for. So, thank you, and from, really, from my heart, take the right decision. It has more influence than you can think of way outside of our schools' toilet stools. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Bostic. I go by she/her/hers. I'm a Rutgers professor. I study child health and inequality, but I also have two children in the Highland Park Schools, one of whom is in Bartle. One of our dear family friends also has a non-binary child at Bartle. My family has really seen this child grow and comfortable in their own skin, but also really suffered tremendous setbacks and heartbreak in our schools. So, you know, I'm here as an ally and as a concerned parent. Instituting multi-stall all-gender bathrooms, as we know, right, is a necessary step for supporting this friend as well as all other friends, and I just wanted to sort of echo the thanks that, for what you said earlier about planning to do that, but also to stress that I think we really need one on each floor to be truly accessible for the kids, right? To have to go to another floor is also going to separate out those kids, so. Now I'll go back to script.
Oh, you're right.
So, la-la-la-la-la, I'm going to introduce our fifth. Oh, I'm a member of Gender Equity H.P. And our fifth, fundamental reason for instituting all-gender multi-stall bathrooms at Bartle. There's precedent for multi-stall all-gender bathrooms at the elementary school level, and these bathrooms comply with current state law. Many of the safety and privacy concerns that have been raised in the conversation, maybe not tonight, but in general, are valid, but they apply to all multi-stall bathrooms, not all-gender bathrooms in particular. Specifically, I'm going to talk about how other elementary schools have successfully implemented multi-stall all-gender bathrooms. I'm going to focus on one public elementary school in San Francisco that's a very good parallel to our Bartle, although we know that there are also other schools that have implemented multi-stall all-gender bathrooms successfully. So, Miraloma Elementary School is a public kindergarten through 5th grade school with approximately 400 students. Bartle has a similar number of students, and like Bartle, Miraloma has standard multi-stall bathrooms, so bathrooms with stalls that you can see under with closed-door cracks. However, as the school began to have non-binary students enrolling, they realized that if the school was really going to be kid-driven, they needed to create bathrooms that worked for everyone. Noah Anger is the principal of Miraloma and said that, and I'm quoting here, "It's driven by the kids. The second there's one kid who needs an all-gender bathroom, I find it my moral obligation to have it," end quote. So Principal Anger converted several of their multi-stall bathrooms to all-gender bathrooms. They removed the urinals, making them look exactly like a typical girls' room, and opened them to children of all genders. And to be clear, several of their all-gender bathrooms were exactly like what two of Bartle's all-gender bathrooms were last week, right? It was easy, it worked. The principal said, of course, that there have been some issues in the school bathrooms, but expressed with 100% certainty that there are no more issues in all-gender bathrooms than in boy-only and in girl-only bathrooms. And these are all issues that conversations about respectful bathroom use would address. He also said that the all-gender bathrooms are a source of pride for him and the school, and that the all-gender bathrooms are exactly in line with their school's mission. So the San Francisco Unified School District, the SFUSD, as they refer to it, takes their core values seriously. Their core values are similar to those of Bartle, and they articulate them in an acrostic based on the initials, which is why I read the initials. Okay, so S is for student-centered, F is for fearless, U is for united, S is for social justice, and D is for diversity-driven. Mr. Anger said, I'm quoting again, "If you want to embrace and live these core values, having multi-stall all-gender bathrooms is essential. These bathrooms are aligned with these values. It's all about the kids and supporting their growth and development." And I think that's very much what Highland Park wants to be about and is about, and I think we need to embrace that for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't want to prevent too many other people from speaking in a timely manner. Poor Principal Ingbar, is it Ingbar? Ingbar, Ingbar, something like that.
So here I'm going to defer to other members of H.P.
Well, I wonder if, you know, we have a sort of a rule about not getting into back-and-forth of members of the audience, so I want to be respectful of that, but I wonder if this poor man would be willing to speak with people in our district if they had questions about this. He probably gets a lot of questions from a lot of people.
He said he'd be happy to.
No, that's okay, that's okay. But maybe we could just email back and forth about that, or you could get up in a minute and... Sure, yeah, yeah, do you mind? I'm sorry. Oh, I messed up the line though, I'm sorry.
He said he'd be more than happy to. He'd be happy to talk with anybody from the board. I also have the district contact who has talked with, who has said that there are other schools that have multi-stall all-gender bathrooms implemented, and he's happy to talk with you guys as well, so I can get you the content information.
Wonderful, thank you. I mean, Scott, would that be okay if she sent that to you? Just, I'm not sure that you do have questions, but if you do, thank you. That was from Ms. Springer. Right, is that your last name? Is that Springer?
You got it, yeah.
Got it? Okay, excellent. All right. Sorry for that interjection.
My name is Jeff Bardaro. I live in Highland Park. My daughter just started in the school district. I came here upset about the bathroom reversal, and now I'm a little upset about the music program at the middle school, I guess, but... I really was just hoping for some clarity on a couple of things, and I don't, this is my first board meeting, so I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions, but...
We don't always answer, but-
That's fine. I'll ask questions, you can answer if you want. One is, I was hoping that there might be some more clarity on how the board intends to avoid situations like this in the future. I'm sure this will not be the last inclusivity policy that the board or the district adopts, and I would like to hear that there's some plan for, if there's some public response to that, that the default is not going to be to roll back whatever protections have been offered as an interim measure, because I don't think that's the right approach. I guess that turned into a comment and not a question. But the second question is actually a question I heard, I heard you say at the beginning of the meeting that there's some sort of New Jersey code problem with just adopting an all-gender bathroom, and I was hoping you might be able to tell us what the code is and how that poses a challenge so that maybe the community and all these interested people can help solve that problem.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I meant that more as an example of why we're struggling, because we're finding out things at the last second. You know, three hours ago, one of our board members, Chris Woodward, asked, you know, "Are there any code provisions we need to look at?" And we asked our attorneys, "Oh, yeah! Usually we don't like to implement things this way." So I meant it more as an example, this particular code provision may be surmountable. The issue has to do with, let me see if I can get it right, and apologies if I get it wrong. The state of New Jersey requires schools to have on each floor at least one all-female multi-stall bathroom, and at least one, sorry, at least one female-only multi-stall bathroom, and at least one male-only multi-stall bathroom. At Bartle, we have on the bottom floor only one female multi-stall bathroom and only one male multi-stall bathroom. So the initial thought that many of us had was, great, let's just have one and one. That could put us in violation of the requirement that we have sex-segregated multi-stall bathrooms for each gender in addition to any all-gender bathrooms. I mean, in other words, it's a physical issue with our layout. Now, I'm not saying we can't overcome this, we can't do more research, but it's something we just found out about, literally hours ago, and clearly that is not the ideal way to go about implementing something. We, you know, our attorney just advised us of this. You know, it conflicts with what I personally wanted to do and what I think was proposed by the superintendent. We just need to figure it out, because the reality is, there will be people displeased by this decision, and that's the reality, and we'd like to avoid as many possible bases for lawsuits as we can. So, we need a minute.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Could I just add that I appreciate Pastor Seth's comment?
Yes.
You know, in some situations, you know, maybe we would want to violate the code, but I think we'd like to know what the code is before we violate it. We just haven't quite figured that out.
We need to make sure we're not missing anything else, is my point. Right, I mean, this was like, just because Chris happened to mention it, we happened to ask the lawyer, so we need a minute. We're trying to make that minute as brief as possible.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I know, I know it could be briefer, so we're-
So they sent up the lawyer last to try to close us out because-
Naturally, yeah.
I think they wanted to send the message here that, don't let folks like me get in your way. Lawyers have a lot of opinions, but often they're just that, their opinions, educated opinions, based in law, based in policy. Oh, I apologize. My name is Sean Lotarette. I am a resident of Highland Park. I have two children in Bartle. I am a member of Gender Equity H.P., here with the rest of the chorus to make our points known.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. I am also the chair of the LGBT rights section of the New Jersey State Bar Association, so kind of like president of the gay lawyers. And I'm also a member of the Murphy administration. I run our state's Department of Environmental Protection. And while I speak for neither of those entities tonight, I think they are, those roles are instructive for what you all are facing here today. And first I want to say, thank you for the work that you do. I know that many of you have, or most of you probably have, have day jobs, you do this work promoting the interests of our children every day, and we are deeply grateful for that.
We appreciate that, and it's a privilege, it's a privilege to be able to do it imperfectly.
We do most things imperfectly. Being in government now, I was a private practice lawyer before, I realize just how imperfect government can be, but often toward the right ends. It's been several times for me that I've sat in meetings like this with folks very displeased over decisions that I've made, questioning their legal basis, questioning whether they're made of sound policy. At the end of the day, as government, as a government body, as an elected body, and you, Mr. Taylor, and your administration as the arm that executes those roles, I think it's important to remember not just what the codes say, but where the discretion lies. And just, there's a couple of things that I point out toward that end. We talk about, and Sharon mentioned how there is precedent for what you all are doing here, and I believe that to be true. In the, earlier this year, as the law that Governor Murphy signed went into effect whereby New Jersey now recognizes a third gender on our birth certificates, I believe that that law provides a legally recognizable basis to move forward in a particular policy direction. And I think you have to look at that from a perspective, another thing that the governor did, which was to promote through the Department of Education its transgender student policies, which says a very, provides a very specific direction, I think, as far as guidance can, of course, and that's to not just recognize, but to honor students of diverse genders. And how you all decide to honor the needs of these children is critical, and that's why it's so important, the democratic process, that we elect people like you all who appoint people like Mr. Taylor to lead these roles, because how you exercise that discretion, how you honor these kids, it is so very important. And I would venture that the code issues that you're up against are surmountable, because oftentimes they are, and I have a stable of LGBT affirmative lawyers who would be glad to help guide your appointed counsel in finding ways to help the guidance, to help bring that guidance of how you honor these kids into life in your policies. You can have mangled readings of these things that drive you into a certain, very risk-averse decision, or you can step boldly into the future that, quite frankly, hearkens, as I walked in here today, struck by this exhibit of pathways to love. What better way to move forward in the policy direction you all are, I think, tending toward, and to bring together with the message of this community about how we honor these kids, how we love these kids, how we show them that they're accepted no matter who they are? So, I will leave you my information. If I can be helpful in making connections within the Department of Education, I would be happy to contact my contemporaries there, as well as make the LGBT bar available to you as well.
That would be fantastic. I mean, Scott, with your permission, may he send his contact info to you?
Yeah, I mean, you have my email address.
Oh, you guys have already been, all right. You're already acquainted.
Have somewhat of acquaintance, but I would-
That's fantastic.
Without going into details, I would love for you to reach out to me if you would. That would really be great.
It would be my pleasure.
That'd be fantastic. Again, like, I didn't mean that code provision necessarily would be an issue, but, you know, there may be more like it. So, yes, that would be fantastic, and I know that our attorney, we trust him implicitly, but he probably would be quite willing and open to hearing from someone who is as president of the LGBTQ-plus bar section, I mean, I'm not getting the title right, what is it called? What is the section?
It's the LGBT rights section of the state bars.
LGBT right, okay. That, I mean, I'm sure our attorney would be happy and open to, if you wouldn't mind. I know we don't like to ask people to do unpaid-
I don't mind asking people to do unpaid work anytime.
Okay, well then, all right.
I will put upon just whomever would take it.
You guys have done a lot of unpaid work here tonight already, and-
As do you, and again, we're grateful, so thank you.
That's very nice of you, thank you.
Hi, so it's me again, Kristen Springer. So, I didn't, I was going by my script. So, thank you guys for all of your work on this. I know you've worked very hard. I guess we just want to follow up a little bit and understand what is the timeline, what is the process, what's happening now? I mean, hopefully we have, I mean, you guys have already talked about it, you've done a lot of great work, I really appreciate it, right? And hopefully we've presented all the reasons why we need to be doing this now. I appreciate that we'll do it soon, but what does that mean? We have kids that need to use the restroom that are afraid to go to school, that, I mean, I don't mean to go through the, what's going on?
Scott, are you best positioned to address that situation?
I think what Ann said earlier is that we're going to move forward, but we've got to take it slowly.
Slower, slower.
Slower. I think that it'd behoove me to work with Ann to craft a statement, not just a statement, but a communication that I could send to all the community, preferably before the end of the week, so everybody has a heads-up about what we're doing and what we're up to. I think that's the biggest problem that I've taken ownership of, lack of communication. So that's, got to be the first step.
So, I, am I allowed to talk, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, yes.
No, no, I mean, I didn't mean interrupting, but like, am I allowed to?
Yeah, 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 this is part of your comment.
Okay, great. So, that's great, communication is great, but do we have, I mean, I know you don't, I don't know what the timeline is, does this mean you guys discuss again at the next board meeting? Are you meeting, and you're, like, can you give us some sense of when we can tell our kids they can go to the bathroom?
Okay, yeah, no, I hear what you're saying, and like, kids need to go to the bathroom now.
Right, exactly.
And it doesn't really matter how much time we want, right. So, we can't give you a detailed definite timeline. However, I can assure you, we'll be talking about this before the next board meeting, which is in what, two weeks, three weeks, something like that? I mean, so we've delegated to Scott the responsibility of getting this done. Right, is that right, Chris? Yeah, go for it.
I think we delegated to you and Scott and Darcy, right?
Yeah.
The actual, carrying this forward, not waiting until the next board meeting. Was that-
That's my understanding. I mean, I can't guarantee it will be done before the next board meeting, because we still have a little bit of research to do. So as much as I hear what you're saying, and I want to just do it now, I can't give you a definite timeline, but I can promise you that it will be discussed, and we will attempt to implement it before the next board meeting. Does that sound fair, Scott?
It does. I, yeah, I mean, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think you said it best.
Okay, all right.
I would also like for you guys to tell your kids how many people showed up tonight, and how many people didn't show up tonight that really, really, really love them and support them. I think that's our job as adults, is to try to turn the temperature down for our kids, so I think that's important, for us to do that in the interim.
Yeah, that would be bathrooms now, but-
And presumably we could do it staged out, right? I mean, like, it doesn't have to be all bathrooms tomorrow, right?
No, right, 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 no. I mean, we're not going to, like, deal with every potential problem. I mean, ideally, we would have beautiful, retrofitted bathrooms that provided enhanced privacy for everybody, and, you know, we're not going to wait until we knock down walls and put up dividers and all that kind of stuff. And we're not going to wait until we definitely can, you know, perhaps have one bathroom on each floor as requested. We're going to get as much done as we can ASAP. It's not satisfactory, I know that, but-
With the potential of possibly doing more, but at least let's get some.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, right. I mean, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, researching retrofitting and da-da-da-da-da, but we understand that this cannot wait until the bathrooms are in beautiful, you know, single-cabin format.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to highlight those who are here tonight, and the almost 500 people who signed our petition, signed a petition for restoring the bathrooms immediately, and at least two. So I just want to, for all of those folks, I want to make sure to speak that again.
Yes.
And, you know, we can, and we've been trying to turn the temperature down for our kids, but they know we're here, and when we get home, or for most of us tomorrow morning, they're going to ask us, are the bathrooms back? So, it's hard, and I think it's hard for them to understand, and we've been telling them, because we're all like, this is wonderful, look at all these people who care about you. And I think they feel some of that, but I think they feel also that their parents have been frantic and- been frantic, and on the phone, and writing speeches, and not paying attention to them, and staying up all night. So when they come in tomorrow and it didn't get fixed, it's hard. It's a hard, it's hard to, it's hard to explain.
Understood.
So, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't 100% understand why we can't put the signs back up and then deal with the details.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to respond much more to that tonight, I hope you understand, and I understand where you're coming from, and it's very difficult not to sort of get into it right now, but I...
We get it, I just want to make, I just want to make sure that I highlight those things again, and we appreciate...
Yeah, we understand that we have not done what you've asked, and we, more is pending. We don't want to be too self-congratulatory here. You know, we understand that you are asking for something very specific, and we have not granted that yet.
We thank you all for your patience and time.
It's an honor to hear you all, thank you for your bravery and your testimony tonight.
Not that anybody else should feel like they can't...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, guys.
All right, sorry. I'm going to just, yeah. Can you use me, Friar? I live in Highland Park. It really is hard to talk and write, anyway. I'm not really good at multitasking, so...
Hold on one second, please, please do in mine, I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Sorry. I promise I'm short.
Okay, sorry, I thought we had a procedural issue, but we don't, we don't after all. Sorry about that, Denise.
I promised to be very, very brief.
That wasn't the issue, as it turns out.
Yeah, no, no, so just promising to be brief. So first of all, I absolutely, of course, support this, that this group that I joined, I think I clicked on it right before I came here, because I didn't realize that I wasn't a member of it. So, anyway, I'm a, I'm a resident of this town for many years, I'm obviously queer, what else could I possibly be?
I don't know, that's obvious, but...
And I worked in the government at a time when it wasn't really a good time to be a queer kind of person, and in fact, I could have lost my job on multiple occasions prior to there being some protections for me. And I paid steep prices for being a queer government employee, particularly in law enforcement. That having been said, I've also been gay-bashed, and so I understand just how horrible it is to be a queer person in your queer skin, not being treated well by society. And in discussing this over the summer, some, discussing queerness over the summer with some friends, who are parents of queer children, their chief concern, of course, is for the safety, the physical, just the physical safety of their child. It tears me apart that, you know, we've come so far, but, you know, I was gay-bashed when I was 27 years old, which, granted, that's 30 years ago, surprisingly. Yeah, I'm an old broad, but, so, yes, we've made progress. I can marry my wife, I can raise my kids, I live in a nice little town, I don't think my kids really appreciate how nice of a town we live in. And the fact that we, we can get social action going really quickly by a small group of people, and you give five, I haven't even signed the darn thing yet, I don't think I've even seen it.
I haven't even won.
I really live on Facebook, but anyway, so I will be adding my name to this thing. But anyways, that you can get something changed, you can get people advocating for change, and you guys know about advocating for change, I, we, we got rid of that boob compon, we got rid of that guy. And we did it, it took longer, I don't think this will take as long, and we're all on the same page, and, you know, my minister was here, and she's like, "Yeah, I'm worried." I'm like, "Yeah, no, no, I'm way more conservative than anybody sitting on that board." And, and, and she's like, "Really?" I'm like, "Yeah, no, for real, they're, you know, their hearts and souls are in the right place." But, but, it, it, there's still, we still need to deal with the equity for trans, queer, LGBTQ-plus, XYZ, and anyone else who needs to get put into that category. So I guess I just wanted to add my voice to that as well, too, because I'm fond of some of these young people I've gotten to met, gotten to meet. I like them, singularly and plural, very well. And now I'm going to turn it around to Rob Scott, because, because I don't want him to be the only voice up here either, in terms of fairness and equity, and I, I don't like what I've seen, the cutting of departments, the cutting of the French department makes me insane, as I told you previously, the most useful thing I learned in high school was French, and I learned it in four years of high school, and I'm not fluent, but I used it throughout my career. And if you want to get inclusive, French is far more inclusive than Mandarin, and I'm not saying get rid of Mandarin.
I don't think we want to have that argument right now.
No, no, I'm not either, but I'm just saying, I used French to speak to Africans.
Yeah, no, I know.
So I'm not going to go there, but, you know, hearing the music department getting cut to 20 minutes, for God's sake, hearing, you know, all these wonder, I didn't even know there was, you could take African-American literature and creative writing, and, so there needs to be some kind of sussing out of what is real and what is fantasy, or wishful, you know, hope-for's, or whatever you want to call it. We need to suss that out. And, you know, my own experiences with my kids in high school has been fraught, and I have two kids who are diametrically at opposite ends of the spectrum. One kid's doing all AP everything this year, the other kid is having a great year, he's doing the WISE program, fabulous, he's doing music technology, fabulous, he's doing art, fabulously, and by the way, he's doing the lovely math program for the kids who, you know, to help them, I forgot what it's called, it's like, the last, the review of your last three years of high school math, you know, geometry, algebra, and I guess algebra, too, I don't even know what it is. But anyway, he's taking that class, again, you know, my comment to him was, like, maybe not copy this time, maybe actually do the work. Anyway, so I'm really glad that we were able to do this, but I really, really, it pains my, to see this happening, and to see it happening to the younger kids, and I'm, with that having been said, I'm really glad my kids are moving on, because I would worry about them even more so than I do now, but I would be, if they were in middle school, I'd be worrying about what their high school future was going to bring. I'm glad my kids are exiting the system, but I still live here, and I still care about my friends' kids. So, yeah, no, as much as I want to say, "Yeah, yay, yay, yay," I'm like, no, we're not moving on, it, we're still part of the community, and I still care about my friends' kids, too, whether they're trans, or just your run-of-the-mill cisgender kind of kid. It's all okay. So that's all I had to say, and now I'll shut up. Thank you, but thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Denise, thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, we have to go through some, we have to go through our board action items now, which we did not do. All right, people can feel free to leave or stay, it's a fascinating process, what we're about to do right now. All right, Michelle, would you like to move the curriculum instruction items?
Sure, I would like to move items one through three, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Is there a second on curriculum?
Second.
Oh, I didn't hear, sorry. May we have a roll call, please?
Thank you all for being here.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Roslevich?
Could someone tell Rob Scott he forgot his bicycle helmet?
Oh, Rob Scott, bike helmet. Rob Scott.
Sorry, that was very unprofessional.
Calling you to the central office.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right, oh, sorry, Woodward is the last surname letter we have. Rob, would you like to move the finance and facilities items?
Yes, I would.
Everybody should be alert to the items that they should abstain from.
That they should abstain from, exactly. So I'd like to move items one through 18.
Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? At your, you know, when, this is a complicated one. Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes, for all but number 11, and all abstain from 11.
Abstaining from 11? Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Do you want to abstain from number 10, or, because that involves your travel?
I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine.
It's right in front of me, yes. Abstain on item number 10, please. Thank you.
That's fine. Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes, on one through 11, abstain on 12, yes, through 13 through 18.
Okay. Oh, sorry, that's me. I'm sorry. Personnel, I would like to move items, all of the items on personnel, meaning items one through, sorry, items one through 41, please. Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
No, on 19, yes, on the remainder.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And I would like to move that we, what am I trying to say? I would like to move item one on the policy and regulation agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? I'm supposed to ask about discussion after each one of these. Anybody got any discussion they want to, like, retroactively?
Honestly, there should have been a discussion during the committee reports. But yes, you're right.
I messed that up, I apologize.
Hopefully a discussion.
You did, you asked the questions.
Yeah, we did have a discussion during the committee reports, there's supposed to be a second discussion now.
Well, you're just leaving a chance, in case somebody thought of something they hadn't[1736.54]